There you go. Absolutely.
Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, September 9th, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the near future. Please join me in a salute to Flag.
James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton is not here at the moment. Eric Gallopo is absent this evening. Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent this evening. Mayor John Moore is absent this evening. Daniel Shinameo.
Here.
Jen Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
Chairwoman Kerzak.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is the resolution for the 1201 Memorial Avenue Redevelopment Plan Amendment. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion seconded.
Yes.
Yvonne Clayton is not here at the moment. Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mike Goonan.
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman is not here. Daniel Shinameo.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes. Okay, today we have, our next item on the agenda is 1210 Springwood Avenue. Do we have our, is this notice appropriate, Chuck? Or was, did we just carry it without notice, right?
It was carried without notice.
It was carried without notice. Okay. The other item that I have is that there was also, I believe, Murray, that everybody here on the board is eligible to vote? Is that true?
With exception of Jen.
With exception of Jen. Jen and Yvonne are recused, but Yvonne's not.
Okay, so we have one, two, three.
Five.
So we have five.
So we have a four.
We have a four, but it's up to the applicant if they're okay with this.
We'll vote for six.
Okay.
Whether we go to vote or not, we'll make that decision later.
Well, actually, you can't make the decision later.
I will proceed.
Okay. Right? You have to decide now because later is, we're already, the train left the station at that point. Okay?
Yeah, and I don't carry in order to get other people to listen to the record to vote. I wouldn't carry at the end if we only had five to get more people to listen to the vote, listen to the record.
Right.
No, five, you're working with five.
Five, and I need three.
That's correct. Yeah, I like you. We're good.
I would at least like to proceed. We've worked hard and at least.
It's up to you. That's no problem.
It's your call. If there's a vote, there's a vote of five.
I understand.
Okay. Okay. Come on up. Who's coming up?
You're up, Joe.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. John Marmor for the applicant. Interfaith Neighbors, we were last here in June, as you recall. Our project was pretty fairly reviewed with a number of suggestions that we rework certain aspects of it. We did have informal meetings with your professionals. We did resubmit plans, and we made some what we consider significant alterations that Mr. McEvely, the executive director, will take us through. And hopefully you'll agree with us that we have come pretty far to the middle to meet with you.
All right, can I just, just one thing? Who did you meet with? I know that it was like a DRC discussion. Who specifically did you meet with?
Paul, before you testify, let's get you sworn in.
Yes.
Please raise your hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name again for the record and spell.
Paul McEvely, M-C-E-V-S-N-VICTORY-L-Y.
Thank you.
All right, the DRC that you had, who was I?
We met with the vice chair, with Joe, and with Eric Gallopo.
All right, Eric and?
Name.
Ah, James, okay. Great. Okay. Just so that we can put on the record that Eric is not here, but the two people that were here, James and Mike, are. Okay. From what I can see, one other thing that I'd like to bring up is that I see that the reports that we received from both engineering and planning, I just want to make sure that I saw that additional information was provided after the reports were completed. This raises concerns to me. Specifically, mostly for the engineering report that was completed on August 21st, and I see a report that came out for stormwater management on the 30th of August, which is beyond the date that it was already reviewed by Mr. Avakian. So I'm concerned about that. So let's throw that on the table. Because whatever is in his report is, does not include whatever changes were made on stormwater management that you provided, or William Fitzgerald provided on August 30th. I'm putting that on the record.
Now, we appreciate that, Madam Chair, and I believe that was mostly technical information. I don't know that, we can certainly address it if need be, but for the most part, I think the comments in both Ms. Miller's and Mr. Avakian's report are what was mainly the issues before this board when we were last here. But we can certainly get into some.
Right, because I'm very, I'm concerned when we have a detailed report where my engineer can't have enough time to reply to it in writing, I'm concerned.
Okay.
I'm just putting that out there, so let's see what this contains when we get there and see if Mr. Avakian is comfortable. If he's not, then we will have to come back, have him reply to this, your report, and do that part again. That's one piece of this presentation. But go ahead.
Okay. Well, we'd like to start giving you an overview of the changes that were made to the plan since this was last presented to you in June, and for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McEvely.
Yes, thank you for placing us on this evening's agenda. And harkening back to the June 3 meeting, our main takeaways from the board's concerns that evening and from that extended discussion centered on access and egress to and from the lobbies in the building, vertical and horizontal circulation within the building, access control and security throughout the building, and the elevations and some aspects of the exterior design. In terms of uses, there were many questions and apparent concern over the inclusion of early childhood learning space for four- and five-year-olds, including how we proposed to handle pickup and drop-off of the children, access to the second-floor space and security for the children while they were in the building. This use also garnered considerable discussion when we met with city officials informally before the June 3 application heard by the board. So after careful consideration, we have decided to eliminate the early childhood learning use in this project in favor of commercial tenant space. These tenancies will be fully compliant with the Springwood Avenue Redevelopment Plan uses, approved uses in that plan for the neighborhood commercial zone. I expect that that use will be office use, and we actually intend to offer it to other nonprofits that are working in the neighborhood or providing services to the neighborhood. We have simplified the first and second floor floor plans in response to questions and concerns of the board going out of the June 3 meeting. We've eliminated one elevator. The remaining elevator will service all floors. We've added a residential lobby with an entrance from Avenue A. Mailboxes and package delivery will be to that lobby for the residential units on the third floor. The main lobby remains at the corner of Springwood Avenue and Avenue A. There is still a rear entrance to the building from the parking lot at the rear of the site. Site circulation for the vehicles, onsite vehicle access, has also been simplified. Onsite pickup and drop-off has been eliminated, given the elimination of that use, early childhood center use. This actually enabled us to eliminate three curb cuts that showed in the prior site plan, one on Avenue A and two on Atkins Avenue. And in eliminating those curb cuts, we've effectively restored three to four parking spaces at the curb. This also allowed us to increase onsite parking from 18 spaces to 20 spaces. These and other changes to the building footprint, the architectural changes to the architectural design, including materials and colors, as well as the stormwater retention and other site engineering issues, the architect and the engineer will take us through that this evening. I believe we found a way to address those concerns that were raised at the June 3 meeting of the board. I would like, after my testimony concludes, to invite Charlie Horner, who is the vice president of the Asbury Park Museum, to offer testimony as to the museum space we planned in the building and that particular use and how it will serve the community. So that's an overview of the changes we've made in response to both the June 3 meeting as well as the review, our meeting with the design review group. And I can answer any questions you may have from an overview standpoint before the architect and engineer get into the more detailed aspects of the changes.
Well, the amount of changes that you've made seem to almost have made this, I would almost say a different application, because all the modifications that, a lot of it had to do with the childcare center, that we had a lot of concerns. But you have the time? You have, you have two hours? Have at it.
Agreed.
I'd like to ring Mr. Horner.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Would you identify yourself for the record, and then we'll have you sworn.
Yes, Charles John Horner Jr., Vice President of the Asbury Park Museum.
H-O-R-N-E-R?
H-O-R-N-E-R, yes.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Horner, would you please explain your role in this proposed project?
Well, I am vice president of the Asbury Park Museum. The Asbury Park Museum is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, all-volunteer organization, was founded in 2018 by our president Kay Harris, who is unable to be here today. We've had a lot of goals in trying to preserve the history of Asbury Park, and I guess one of our main goals was to try to develop a permanent city museum for Asbury Park. That's eluded us so far, I guess, but it's something that has always been in our minds. We have, since we've founded, we've been doing a number of pop-up exhibits. We have one up now in the lobby of the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel. We have one in the Asbury Park Library. In the 153-year history of Asbury Park, I don't think they've ever had a permanent museum, and it's something that has been, as I said, has been eluding us. But recently, Interfaith Neighbors has offered us 1,300 square feet on the first floor of the memorial center. It's actually too small for a city museum, but it's perhaps perfect and, it's perfect size and perfect location for a museum dedicated to the history and culture of the city's west side. Since the 1870s, the west side of Asbury Park has played an important role in the development of numerous genres of African-American popular music, including ragtime, stride piano, jazz, spirituals, gospel, black Fordville blues, rhythm and blues, duo op, and soul music. And the Springwood Avenue entertainment scene has shaped the careers of everyone from Duke Ellington and Count Basie to Billy Brown. If you look at some of the things that went on here that are not generally known, the first black vocal group ever to record was from Asbury Park. The earliest banjo recording ever made in the 1890s was made by a black Asbury musician. And in fact, the first vocal and guitar country blues record ever made was done by an Asbury Over the past five years, there's been a resurgence of interest in west side history and culture, various projects by the Asbury Park Museum, the Asbury Park Historical Society, Springwood Avenue Rising, Vibrant Places Project, the Asbury Park African-American Music Project, the Restoration of a Turf Club. These are all great projects, and we support them all, but they barely scratch the surface of what was here. My wife Pam and I have been intensively researching west side music history for the past 13 years. We've collected hundreds of displayable artifacts, photographs, records, posters, uniforms, musical instruments, and other memorabilia. We have museum experience, not only with the Asbury Park Museum, but we've done, actually done five major museum exhibits on west side music history, including a six-month exhibit that was at the Monmouth County Historical Society Museum in Freehold. So what would a west side museum look like and what would go into it? About a third of the space would be dedicated to the general history of the west side. General history portion would be documenting the beginnings of the west side, the glory days of Springwood Avenue, the west side businesses, churches, west side community center, boys' club, et cetera. Two-thirds of our proposed museum would be west side music and entertainment legacy. Music tourism, of course, is very important to Asbury Park, but the music tourism now is based, centered mostly around east side music of the past 50 years. Music tourists in town for different events would find an interest in west side contributions of jazz, blues, gospel, rhythm and blues, duo op, and soul music. Diversity and inclusion, while most of the African, most of the music on the west side was African-American in origin, we will also cover indigenous brass bands, Italian-American duo op groups, et cetera. The exhibit will cover the music venues and socioeconomic conditions that produce the music. On display will be hundreds of photographs, rare posters, musical instruments, uniforms, sheet music, et cetera. We're going to have some interactive kiosks, which will allow visitors to dig deeper into subjects. There'll be monitors with slideshows and video clips who allow visitors to watch interviews, listening booths that will allow visitors to experience some music genres they were not familiar with, and rotating exhibits. We realize this museum will be costly. We're confident we can raise the funding through corporate sponsorships, grants, and private donations. And of course, we can't believe, we can't even begin fundraising until the planning board has approved all of this. An African-American museum on Springwood Avenue would not only complement the other projects that are going on documenting west side history, it could be a centerpiece and draw visitors to the west side, especially music tourists, and it could be a jumping off point for the Vibrant Places self-tours. One cautionary note, preserving history is time-sensitive, and we're running out of time. We've interviewed scores of singers and musicians since we started this project 13 years ago. Since then, 15 of the people we have interviewed or assisted in this research project are no longer with us. Someone once said, "A people without the knowledge of its past history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots." Thank you.
And that's all we have. Any questions for the board?
Does a board member have any questions? Okay, does?
Yeah.
I'd like to open it up to the public. If the public has any questions specifically about what this gentleman just spoke about, and I emphasize questions, not comments, questions, please come up to the microphone. You will, just as a point of order, just so that we realize, for some of you that may not have ever been here before, and I see some familiar faces and some not-so-familiar faces. So what happens is that ever, after every witness, I mean, after every witness presents, the public is allowed, as well as the, as well as the board members, the public is allowed to ask questions specific to what that person stated, so that those questions can be answered. At the end of the, after everybody presents, at the end of the application, when the, when the board is ready to consider a vote, everyone in the public is allowed to speak for three minutes on whatever comment they might have about the application as a whole. So this is the time to ask questions, and I see we have someone. Come on up.
I'll give you an example, yes.
Yes.
David Duncan, Ocean, New Jersey. So just planned hours of operation, when are the lights going to be on, like, who's going to be there, what times of the day, what comment days per week? Are you going to do other things beside, like, those green specialty programs, what's your other planning for the space aside from just a place to show pictures and instruments?
Yes, it's, let me get to the mic. We haven't really decided on hours yet. It's a little bit early to decide on that, but we also are planning out a lot of other activities and all that would go along with this. Of course, we will have a rotating exhibit in here, which will keep people coming in to see new parts and bring people back to the museum. But even now, when we're doing some things with the Asbury Park Museum and the pop-up exhibits and things that we have, we have a lot of activities that go along with them.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All right, your next witness.
Thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Paul, we didn't open the ball up to Chris.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, my error. My apologies to everyone. The first witness, I did not give anyone an opportunity to ask questions that way based on the testimony that he gave. If anyone would like to do that, let's do that now, so we do it correctly. Anyone who would like to question Mr. McEvely?
All right, thank you. All right, next witness.
Thank you. So we'll call our project architect, Steve Carlid. He was previously sworn in, qualified.
Steve, let's get you sworn again. We don't need your credentials, though. We know who you are. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Stephen Carlid, C-A-R-L-I-D-G-E, Shorepoint Architecture, Ocean Grove, New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, can I also assume that because this project has changed so dramatically, that you'll be going over where we are? Like, we're not, we're not skipping parts?
Yeah, Paul gave an overview of the changes, but now I'll walk you through all of those changes.
Right, and how they impact.
To whatever level of detail you'd like. I'll try and keep it as brief as possible.
Right, but it has to be just whatever modifications were made to whatever, what we have already seen, so. It's been a while also.
We just need to get the plans up and.
Okay.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Okay. So we'll start, we'll go through floor by floor, just like we did the last time.
Can we just make it significantly bigger?
This is your revised plans?
These are the revised plans, correct.
Let's refer, since I don't have an exhibit list with me, let's just make it AA1 for today, with today's date.
Okay.
And is this from August 5th?
See the date.
Is that the date?
Yeah.
Okay.
August 5th.
That's what the board has.
If we could go to the next sheet, we'll go right to the plans. This is just an image. We'll come back to that when we get to the, the design of the building. As Paul mentioned, the biggest change, all of the changes, in fact, were triggered by the fact that we made a decision to eliminate the early childhood center. So now, when you look at the first floor, you'll notice that the drive-through that used to provide drop-off for the, and pickup for the early childhood center is no longer there. The parking area is still in the same location under the building, on the south side of the building, and it is served by a single access point off of Avenue A. Prior, our prior plan showed 18 onsite spaces. We currently show 20 onsite spaces, and we'll talk more about the rest of the parking when we get there. You'll notice if you look at the building, which obviously fronts on Springwood Avenue on the corner of Springwood and Avenue A, the main lobby is located on the front, on the northwest corner. It's still there. You enter the lobby through a vestibule off of Springwood Avenue. You also have access to that lobby from the parking lot, which is under the second and third floor of the building, on the south side of the building. In response to your concerns about the residential lobby not having street frontage, we have relocated the residential lobby entry to Avenue A, and you can see it there on the right-hand side of the sheet. That entrance provides a separate lobby, access, access controlled via key cards or key fobs for the residents. They will enter into a vestibule and then beyond that point into the lobby itself. Their mailboxes and their package pickup will be handled in that location. If you move then to the front of the building facing Springwood, you'll see the, give or take, 1,400 square foot of museum space. The museum is accessed directly off the front vestibule, off, adjacent to the main lobby, and there is an egress door. Because of the occupancy load of the museum, there is a second egress door onto the sidewalk at Springwood Avenue. Behind that, you'll notice a new refuse room. And one of the other major changes that was made to the building that we had a lot of discussion about last time, we have eliminated the dumpsters and the dumpster enclosure area, which used to open onto Atkins Avenue. We're no longer going to use dumpsters. We're going to use robo-cans and street, and we're going to bring those cans to the street for pickup. We haven't yet decided, or we don't know for sure whether that'll be municipal or private, but whatever it is, it'll be done via robo-cans. There is a trash chute, which feeds that refuse room, which is located immediately adjacent there to the lobby, which is, which can be accessed by the residents on the third floor and by the commercial users, Interfaith Neighbors, and the potential commercial tenants on the second floor. Refuse will be handled with 11 65-gallon robo-cans at that location, and they'll be brought to the street on the appropriate day by the building management personnel.
Who's the fitness center for you?
I'm going to get to the fitness center next time. I'm getting there. By also eliminating the early childhood center drop-off, we were able to create, we freed up additional space, and you'll notice that behind the residential lobby on Avenue A, there is a new fitness center, which will be available to all building occupants. That includes the residents and the staff of Interfaith and the staff of the tenants. It will not be open to members of the neighborhood, and they will not be selling memberships. It will only be to serve the building occupants.
So how do the residents, the questions I wanted to ask, still, we have, we have the separate resident entrance, right, correct? They don't go in through the main lobby?
They, well, they can enter through the main lobby.
Double-door elevator?
Yes.
Is that, the door open both ways?
Yes, it opens on both sides, and it'll be controlled by a, by a key card, so that only the residents will have access to the third floor, and only those people who work or employed on the second floor will have access to the second floor.
So residents can come in either way?
They can come in either way, yes.
They have separate entrances?
But to get to your question, I think where you're going, they will have to enter through the lobby to get to the fitness center.
I guess they could come through the, could they come through the rear entrance, too, right?
Yes, they could come straight in from the parking area to the rear entrance. We've also, we have enough room now that we've added two restrooms, one each for men and women, and both of those restrooms include shower facilities. So that enables us to get that missing lead point that we talked about last time at some length, because we now have a fitness center with shower facilities. If you remember, without a shower, you don't get the lead point. Even though we are not seeking LEED certification, and I'm going to cycle back to LEED at the end of this presentation, the rest of the first floor is consumed by building services. You have a, you know, water service entry room, electrical room, and a teledata room. Building services on the first floor. The other thing you'll notice at the top of the sheet is now on Adams Avenue, we have added, in addition to stair number two, which is the second egress stair, we have added a recycling room. There are 16 65-gallon robo-cans that can be accommodated in that recycling room, and both the residential tenants and the commercial tenants, Interfaith and any of their four, however many there end up being, tenants will put, deposit all of their recycling manually into those robo-cans in the recycling room. They also will be taken to the street on the appropriate day by building management.
So Steve, you mentioned, so the garbage disposal, you'll have a chute?
Yeah, we'll have a chute for the trash, not for, not for recycling. Completely separate. And that'll be a building management issue to make sure everyone understands how that operates.
Where does the chute go, at the same room?
The chute runs vertically out of that refuse. The chute runs vertically out of that refuse room that you see right there in the middle of the plan, and when we get to the upper plans, you'll see there's a refuse room on both the second and third floor, where everyone else will be able to go to that refuse room and use the trash chute.
So the recycling storage at the top of the screen, there's a separate room for other recycling, there's two recycling areas?
I'm sorry, I mean...
There's a recycling room at the top of the picture as well.
So the top is just recycling?
Just refuse, just trash?
The lower room, which is connected there behind the restrooms and next to building services, is for trash only.
Okay.
And we will have to, that's a building management issue. They'll have to make sure the residents understand that their recyclables are brought to the other room, trash goes to the trash room.
So how do they bring that in? Because that stair is, that's just a...
The stair number two, which previously had been simply for emergency egress purposes, will now be available to the residents via key access, so they can use that stair. They may choose to come down the elevator and walk around and bring their recyclables in when they're coming and going from their, you know, going in their normal day of business, day of daily business, but they can use stair number two.
So for the recycling?
For the recycling.
They'd have to go up to the sidewalk and come back?
Correct, correct. Or they can enter it from both sides. If you look, there's a door on the inside as well, facing the parking area.
So you'd have to take the elevator?
Well, but not from the stair.
Not from the stair. You have to, you have to exit the stair, yes, and then, and then go to the recycling room.
It does lead to more steps that I think many people would be doing. Obviously, if you have a chute for your trash and recycling, you say, hey, you gotta go outside, potentially going outside stairs. We can appreciate that, but you also have 16 cans compared to 11 that got, that's just my two cents, is that I don't think they'll be utilized.
Well, the 16 cans is there because we expect a...
I understand.
Less frequent pickup of recyclables. And the other thing that, when it comes to, these sizes are actually quite large as compared to the similar operation across the street.
Same with, same with, so logistically, if you're a tenant, and I'm actually one of the bigger advocates for going green, now I'm going to have to potentially go outside to bring a separate trash bag to recycling, when you could just drop it down when you have refuse in one area. It's just my two cents. That's all it is. Logistically, I think that's tough, though.
Why not put a door from the stairs into the recycling room directly?
Because it's a fire-rated egress stair, and you're not supposed to provide any direct access off a fire-rated egress stair by code.
Yeah, so you can go outside.
They can go outside and come back in, but you can't connect access to...
It's installed.
Okay, it's a code issue, okay? Okay, so that's, that's the first floor. The other thing I should mention is we have 36 bicycle racks, half of which are at the top right corner, to the right, to the west side of stair number two, and the others that you don't see here, but you'll see on the site plan, are to the lower left corner on the sidewalk, and we'll get to that when we get the site plan up. But there are 36 bicycle racks, where 35 are required, so we have accommodation for all of the required bicycles here on the first floor, on the ground level. Go to the second floor. So the second floor, which used to house the Early Childhood Center, you can see on the west side of the building, four tenant spaces. There can be four, they may, depending on the need for tenancy, they may be re-divided into three, five, it depends on what the market wants. But we have space for the tenant spaces on the west side of the building, and then the entire eastern, two-thirds of the building is Interfaith Neighbor's new headquarters. You enter via a second-floor lobby. You can see the elevator opens into that lobby. There is a monumental stair, which I forgot to mention, is also in the lobby on the first floor. You can use that monumental stair to come up the stairs into the second-floor lobby. You then have a receptionist for Interfaith Neighbors right there adjacent to it, and you can enter Interfaith Neighbors if you have business with them at that location. If you don't, you can circulate back down that corridor to any of the potential tenant spaces, and obviously, you can see that there's, there are three stairs in the building. The commercial tenants will use stair number two and the monumental stair as their egress points. Interfaith Neighbors folks will use stair number two and stair number one, which is located in the lower left-hand corner, as their egress points. All of Interfaith Neighbor's operations are going to be consolidated here, all of their various departments, and this plan accommodates all of their needs. If you look right in the, if you see the elevator, just to the left of it as the corridor starts, you'll see there's a trash room there where the trash chute exists. So Interfaith Neighbors folks and the commercial tenants can deposit their trash in that chute at that location. Everyone on this floor has access to that refuse room and the trash chute. If we go up to the third floor, we still have the eight residential units. As we discussed last time, there are three one-bedroom, four two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom. One of the two-bedroom has been designated for low income. The three-bedroom unit has been designated for low to moderate income. These are all responding to questions raised in Donna's letter. They are all UHAC family units, all eight of them. And I should have mentioned earlier, the building is completely handicapped accessible, and all these residential units are type A adaptable, as is required in the state of New Jersey. And if you have any questions about that, I can address it, but they are, they all are type A adaptable units. The other thing that you don't see here is that the second-floor roof, the projection to the south, which is, you can see here, that L-shaped projection, which on the left-hand side of the page, is the roof of Interfaith Neighbors down below. We planned to install a solar array on that roof, and we'll talk about some green initiatives later when we get to that point. So that's where the solar array will go, on the second-floor roof, facing east and south.
I assume in stair one, the tenants from the upper floors can't get into the room?
The tenants from the upper...
Interfaith Neighbor, I guess there's two doors that are entry onto each floor, right?
No, not stair one. If you come downstairs one, you're going all the way to the ground and exiting the building, correct. And if you, if you went back to the second floor, we actually have a control point, go back. You can see where we can control access both to Interfaith Neighbor's space, because the residents will have access to stair number two for use, going up and down if you so choose to use it. We have a control point, there's a vestibule outside of it, and that controls access to both the commercial spaces on the right-hand side of the sheet and Interfaith Neighbor's on the left.
So stair one is just...
Stair one is an emergency egress stair only, yes. If you're going to walk up to Interfaith Neighbor's, you're going to use the stair in the lobby, the monumental.
Of course, stairs two is...
You could, if you, you could, yes. If you parked in the garage and wanted to just walk up one flight, you could. If we go to the roof plan, I don't know that there's, we need to discuss the roof plan. Obviously, it's a, not, when I say a flat roof, it's pitched at a quarter inch per foot, but it will essentially appear as a flat roof. And there is mechanical equipment, which will all be screened on the roof. We have aluminum mechanical equipment screen, which will surround all of the mechanical equipment. And there's one other note that came up in Donna's letter, and that is that all of the venting of the residential units will be through the roof. There'll be no venting through the facade of the building at all. We go to the next place, we can start to talk about some changes to the architecture. On the top of the sheet, you can see the Springwood Avenue elevation. The lobby is at the right-hand corner of that elevation. The only place in the building where the storefront glazing extends two stories, because we have two public lobbies, both on the first and second floor, is at this southwest, I'm sorry, northwest corner of the building, which is the main entry. We have a big metal band, a metal band that wraps around over that storefront, that'll contain pin-mounted stainless steel lettering. That lettering will spell out the Memorial Center, which is the title to the building. If you looked a little to the left of the lobby, you'll see a small panel, which appears to be, I have samples of the materials, but it's a lighter color. That is a metal accent panel, and the address of the building will be mounted, pin-mounted letters on that metal access panel. The entire first floor of the building, other than that one access panel, is storefront glazing, clear glass. We want to invite everyone on the sidewalk to see what's happening in the building. The glass that you see in the center there is opening into the museum. The glass that you see on the right-hand side is entering into the lobby. If you go around the corner at the lower, the lower elevation, which is the Avenue A elevation, the west elevation, you can see that band wraps around and stops, but in that clear glass area that you see that's two stories tall, right inside of that will be the monumental stair. So any traffic that you have pedestrian, you know, people traffic moving up and down during the day will be visible from the street. And we like to do that, that helps to activate the streetscape there by having the vertical circulation visible on the exterior of the building.
And there'll be one address for the residence?
There'll be, there'll be a separate address. Now, I'm going to move back. If you go just behind that lobby, you'll see there is an inset door. That is the new residential lobby. That is also accented with some metal panel. That metal panel curves and creates a slight recess. That'll be illuminated at night, we'll get to the lighting in a bit, but there will be a separate address for the residences there that'll be mounted, pin-mounted letters on those.
So when you use separate address, it'll have a Avenue A address and the other one office?
You know what? I don't exactly know that. We'll have to talk to the postmaster about how that's going to be set up, and that always depends on what the postmaster tells us.
What, did you mean just having a separate place for, if it's the same address, just a separate signage at that edge?
Yeah, I don't know how the postmaster's going to want to designate the units. I assume the building will want to have one address. Usually, the fire department requires one address, but from the post office perspective, we're going to have to deal with the postmaster and figure that out. But this isn't the first multi-tenant building that we've had, so we'll be able, we'll be able to work that out.
So just for clarity, I'm sorry, that, that, all of the glass that we're talking about on the first floor is clear?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, does that change as we go up the floors?
No, we're talking clear glass in the whole building.
All right. The only thing that I'm going to ask of you is that if you look at where your emergency exit is, stair one, as you go up, you see that there's like, what, four panels of glass?
Yeah.
I asked for us to understand what kind of lighting is in there, because what we have found is that in other buildings here, if that glass is clear, it's a bit offensive to the people that are across from it. So like, let's say if you have, if your stairwell is lit, and you have a clear glass on the stairwell, at night, that light's on. If you, we could have something frosted?
I'll tell you what.
As a choice or some option?
We have no problem with that. We like to have the glass there because we like to be able to see vertical circulation. It helps enliven the streetscape, you know, and it invites people in. But if that's a concern, we would have no problem with switching to a somewhat opaque or a frieded glass, so that we can limit that, the glare emanating from that.
Yeah.
Obviously, that stair is a required egress stair, so it will have to be illuminated, so.
No, no, I, no, no question about that. We just have other buildings in this city. We can have that discussion.
Yeah, and maybe it's the level of illumination that's a bigger problem.
Yeah, I mean...
A little more.
It, I'm just...
I don't think, it's only going to be lit to the code-required illumination.
I don't, I don't argue with you about that. I'm just saying that there are other buildings in this town where we have made this mistake, where now you have a building that's across the street staring at a stairwell with lights. Not appealing if you're sitting in your living room, looking across the street. Just saying. So that's why I'm going to ask.
I'll tell you what, now that, now that we're...
If you could work with our planner...
Our office can coordinate.
We will either shield those lights so that there's nothing...
Yes.
Or we will work with some kind of frieded glass, and we'll solve that problem to the point where Donna would be happy.
Yeah, we just need something out. Donna is very well aware of what my concerns are.
We can work that one out.
So if we can work something out, that would be great.
We have no problem with that, as a condition.
Okay.
So then, talking about the, the changes to the architecture, if you remember last time, we had a first floor, which was essentially glass. We had the second floor, which was the Early Childhood Center, which we were essentially cladding in metal with ribbon windows to provide as much daylight into the Early Childhood learning spaces as possible. And then we had the third floor, which we had transitioned to a simulated wood, and the fenestration varied because it was representative of the floor plans on the third floor. We have now changed that so that the entire building from the second and third floor will be a simulated wood panel. We think this is more cohesive, it works better, we took your suggestions to heart. We are going to accent some of the, the third-floor level with some metal banding on there in order to give it a little bit of life. We've also aligned the fenestration on the second floor to correspond to the fenestration on the third floor. The elevations are further enlivened by the fact that up on the third floor, we have indented, inset balconies, which create shadow and rhythm to the elevation. So that in combination with the addition of glass railings, the simulated wood panel, some metal banding, we think that we now have a building that's cohesive, and yet it's not as harshly delineated in terms of the functions as it was previously. We're pleased with this, we hope you're pleased with it as well, we think it's a vast improvement.
I happen to agree.
We like that.
I don't know if, I don't know how the other planning board members feel, but...
Are we okay with glass railings? Because those were an issue on another project.
They were an issue on another project.
Why?
Go ahead. Because of glare. Because of glare, sun and glare.
Throughout the year. It's offensive, we bring...
Depending on the street, depending on where you are and how the sun is going, there is glare.
These would be west-facing?
This is...
They'd be west-facing?
I think that this...
These are west, and some of them would be, some of them will be north.
North, I don't think that...
And some will be east. The only place we don't have railings would be on the south elevation. And then, the only thing I was going to add here is if you look at the bottom right of the, the lower elevation, you notice that the building is elevated, obviously, above the parking. So if we go to the next sheet, if you, we can go back to glass railings, if you'd like. At the top, we have the Adams, the Adams Avenue elevation. There is one additional change here. You notice on the first floor, we have the metal cladding on the first floor at stair two and the refuse room. We've done that to set it apart, because everywhere else on the building, the second and third floors are different than the first floor, so we've used the metal panel here on the, on the first floor to set that base, set up that base, and then let the rest of the building rise above that. You'll notice on the right-hand side of the upper elevation that the, the building is only two stories there. That's the projected wing of Interfaith Neighbor's office, and the solar array will be on that second-floor roof.
So what color was that one, the south one, silver or red? The one that you're talking about, the ground floor, I suppose?
If you'd like, I can show you, if you, if it's okay. I guess we have to enter these as exhibits, but... The, the yellowish panel that you see is, is this color right here.
I'm sorry, that's...
That's the metal, the metal panel that's on the first floor, and it's accents. It's on the second floor here on the, on the Interfaith projection, where the building is only two stories tall, and it's the first-floor accents. The body, the body of the building is a simulated wood panel, looks like this. The trellises, which are on top of the balconies on the third floor, the open simulated wood trellises are a darker wood like this, and the banding, which signifies the entrance on which the pin-mounted, you can't see it on these elevations, only on the other side, is this color here. And the pin-mounted lettering is stainless steel, something like that will be mounted on that, on the metal, like that. So there'll be contrast, so you can see it. These are A2.
A2. Should I, Jack, should I put them over there?
And I should mention that...
Should I put them over there for the public, if they want to see them?
Sure. Why not? Thanks.
These are walk exhibits, we have these chairs over here.
I should mention that all of this material will be installed as a rain screen on the building. I don't know if everyone understands that, but that means that there'll be a waterproof membrane on the building, and this will be installed, but it will not keep the moisture out of the building, it'll drain behind these panels. They'll be open-jointed. We have also done a few, I should have mentioned, if we can get back to the second floor, I did miss one other point that I wanted to make. If you, that's not going to show, go to the first floor. We also, if you remember, we're right behind the Turf Club building, when we were here the last time, we had a six-inch gap between our building and the Turf Club, which exists, obviously, and we thought that might create an unworkable situation for our construction and then subsequently for their construction. So we have backed our building up five foot, eight inches from the property line. That leaves six foot, two inches of clear space, so that both we and the Turf Club That leaves six foot, two inches of clear space so that both we and the turf club can build what we need to build when the time comes to get in there and build the building.
Is that also going to be a walkway, or is that not?
It's, well, the walkway runs along there. There is a walkway there, and as you can see to the left of that there, you can see we have bicycle racks in that area.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant the walkway from Springwood up.
There is a four-foot gap. We're six inches off the property line at that point. The turf club is three foot, six inches off the property line at that point. So there is a four-foot wide alleyway there. We're not using it for anything. I don't know what their intentions are, but it's there.
Hang on. It's not an alleyway, it's their property.
It's their property. It's their, from their property, right.
Right, so this project can't do anything with it. It is the turf club's.
It, it will appear as an alleyway, but.
And then describe the other. Did you set back further in the other section?
Well, we're set, on the rear, we're set back six foot, two inches from their building. But to the left of stair number one, there's only four foot between our building and their existing building.
So you're providing a six-inch setback from that property line?
So that summarizes the changes. I wanted to touch on a few of the green items that we discussed last time.
Jim, can we just go back to the, where we were on the rendering?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so that, the piece on the right, where it says facing Atkins Avenue, that's where the turf, does the turf club completely cover that? That's, that area?
It's the gray.
The gray area, they, the gray area on the bottom.
The gray, it's only, it's only one story, but the gray is the turf club.
Okay, so what's above it is?
It's a, it's a ground face basery wall.
So we have a blank wall? Two floors of a blank wall?
Yes, but obviously, you have to be pretty far back from the building to see it. If you're on the sidewalk there, you'll never see it.
They've also agreed to meet with.
The Arts Council?
And that is an opportunity for a graphic.
We, I think Mr. McEvilly testified that we were going to wait until the building is constructed and then find a way to include public art somewhere in the building.
That may be true, but then, then we have to make that request that it's done, or else we cannot say that you're resolution, that you're complete. We can't deem you complete until that mural's there.
Well.
Well, there's, we haven't.
So you guys tell me.
We have worked in the past to permit them to, once they've got their formal application.
Right.
To, okay, we've satisfied enough of the commitments.
Okay.
And then shell manage this, them through.
All right, so, but resolution compliance, but it's in resolution compliance.
That's resolution compliance.
Right.
Final zoning compliance.
Oh, final zoning compliance. Okay, okay, we could, we could do it that way. That's, that's fair.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't agreed to a mural there. I know everyone thinks you have a blank wall, you need to have a mural, but we have other ideas about how we might incorporate public art, other than a mural. So we'd like to reserve that until we get there.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, it'll, that's fair.
The other thing that I wanted to find out is that the senior center is across the street. How many, is that the equal amount of stories?
Senior center is, the senior center is three stories and 35 feet, the same as this building.
Okay, so they're both the same, so one will not, will see above the other. So, so the senior center will not see the rooftop of the mechanicals?
No, they will not. Well, first place, if you notice, there's an equipment screen, so nobody will see, nobody will be looking down on our roof.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying is that if the, if the senior center was four stories, they would.
They would, but.
But if they're, if they're just the same size, we're good.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So there was some.
Where did we land? The, the thing that's going to look like an alleyway, but it's actually the turf club property, so we can't, we can't ask for offense there because.
We can't ask for anything because it's their, it's the turf club's property. Okay? You can ask the turf club.
We could ask them.
But not part of this application.
We might know someone there.
No, you might know somebody there. I don't know.
So just, as I talked about last time, we are not seeking lead certification. We're not going to go through the expense of trying to do that, but we have looked at the lead checklist. We believe we're in the 45 to 50 range for lead points.
Yes.
As you know, that's certified, but not silver certified, but we're, we're pretty close. We actually got one more point now that we added these showers, believe it or not, but, but some of the things we do have, we do have a rainwater and stormwater management system. We are going to use a reflective roof coating, probably a white TPO roof, so that we'll reflect the heat. We are going to use, our landscaping that we're using after it's initially installed requires little or no irrigation. We're using all low, water sense low-flow plumbing fixtures in the building. We're using daylighting controls on all of our lighting. We're using all LED fixtures in the building, and they're all dimmable. We are using, we're going to design an HVAC system that will exceed ASHRAI requirements, ASHRAI standards. We're using, our material selections are based on life cycle cost impacts. We're specifying, we will specify materials that are bio-based. If they're wood, they're going to be FSC certified wood, and we're going to emphasize reused and recycled material. We're going to develop a program to divert waste during construction. We, we are using operable windows throughout the building, so you will be able to open your windows for ventilation. We're using all, we're going to specify all low VOC adhesives and sealants and paints. We, every space in the building, almost without exception, except for some of the meeting rooms that are in the center and some of the utility rooms have access to natural light. All of the residential units are oriented towards the exterior, and all the living rooms and non-bathroom spaces have windows, exterior windows. We're using all Energy Star appliances. We are going to exceed the STC ratings between the apartment units to make sure we have good acoustical performance. And we're going to have a solar array producing some amount of electricity for the building on the second floor roof of Interfaith Neighbors. Again, that's, that gets us certified on the lead checklist, but not silver.
I know that we had discussed in our prior meeting that, that you will provide a checklist summary of those items.
Yeah, we have one now, we're refining it, but.
No, that's, that's fine, as long as that's, that's provided by the time of resolution compliance, we're okay. We need to add that to our resolution list.
That's all I had to say as a presentation, but if Donna wants to go through her letter, we can certainly do that.
There were, is somebody else going to do lighting?
Yeah, we're going to.
Somebody else is going to do lighting? Is someone else doing parking, or are you doing parking?
I think Bill's handling the parking.
Okay. That's fine. Those would have been my questions. Okay. All right.
Do you want to go through your letter?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if, if we're in a, in a position to go through the letter, or do we want to wait until everybody's?
They pretty much hit, you know, aside from the things that we haven't talked about yet, the lighting, the plantings, and the parking.
Is there anything in there that in particular you want me to address?
So I just want to clarify, so the mail and package facilities for the residences, that's in the great, the first vestibule?
It's in the vestibule, so the mailman will have access to it without having to get through the second secure door, which will be required, you'll need a key fob or a card access to get through.
And then you still need the bicycle parking. Yeah, I, you know, for the most part, this stuff in my letter is satisfying, so.
So you're, so you're okay?
Yeah.
With the letter?
We'll talk more about lighting.
Right, whatever, whatever is not, has not been touched upon yet, we'll, we'll do so, and I'll depend on Donna to give us that.
In response to questions last time, we, we retained a lighting consultant, and so we're prepared to address the lighting issues as well.
Good, good.
So do we have to think of Donna's letters, variances for setbacks? Have those changed at all?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We, we, when we talked about this previously, you needed some variances because of the setbacks?
Oh, you're right.
Have those changed at all?
Yeah, we, yeah, we need some diminutive, well, on Springwood Avenue and Avenue A, we need really diminutive setback, front setback variances because we are further setback than, than is permitted. The reason we are is we want to provide a vegetated buffer screen there from the sidewalk to the building that was specifically asked of us by Mayor Moore, so we've provided that. The Atkins Avenue setback is what it is because we're trying to preserve a portion of the site for use as a community garden. So we're holding the building back in that area of the site. And by the way, because we've eliminated the trash dumpsters, a lot more area opened up on that area, that portion of the site, which can be used for community garden space than previously.
But your question, they are the same dimensions.
Okay.
They shifted the building in the interior.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't alter the setbacks, by the way. They're the same.
Any other questions from any planning board members of this witness? Any questions from the public of this witness, of anything that he has testified of? Please stand up, this is your time.
Dave Duncan, Ocean. So just a question, so is there any part of the building as far as a vestibule or anything where people from the outside can get in after hours and there's like an, like you said, the vestibule where the mailman comes in, that's going to be unlocked all the time, or there's always going to be a key fob entry?
Yeah, well, typically, the vestibule is accessible.
So it's going to be an open space 24/7?
Otherwise, we'd have to give the mail carrier a key fob as well. We normally wouldn't do that.
Just a security issue.
We manage the Springwood Center building on behalf of Interfaith Neighbors in the city of Asbury Park, and there is a residential lobby there with the vestibule. That outside door, that vestibule is secure. You do need a key fob, and the mailman does have access through that vestibule into the lobby. I imagine we will handle this the same way.
Many, many buildings have the same.
And just second question, as far as the, the lighting for the stairwell, I think that's a, also a great thing that you have as far as clear glass, and I think that fogging that off and so forth, I think there should be a way, is there a way that you can downlight or do something to keep that, that stairwell remains with clear glass as opposed to switching that over to?
That, that, we already have, our, our planners understand that where we're go, what we want to do.
It was mentioned to fog those glasses. I think that's a bad.
It is, but when you, when you're going, there's a perfect example, go down Kingsley. You'll see a building where the stairwell has bright lights in it.
Just needs to be managed properly, but.
Yes. That's what we're looking for. We're looking to manage it.
Okay.
I just have, I have two quick questions.
Please identify yourself.
Jennifer Sauter, your my address, 1403/3. I just have two questions. One, I just want to make sure I'm reading the plans and the elevations correctly. The Springwood Ave elevation had, has that column that's shown, and I think it's behind the turf club, right? That's supporting the second story. Yeah, that, the top. So that column is behind the turf club, yes?
On the third floor, it's exposed, right?
Which, which column are we talking about?
The one that's shown, like visibly in the turf club, but it's, I believe, showing, it's meant to be.
Well, actually, that's behind the turf club. The turf club sits in front of that.
Yes, that's why I just wanted to make sure that that was, I was reading it correctly. And my second question is just knowing that we have these very tight, obviously very tight construction, as we both move forward with different projects, what can be done to protect the turf club during construction when we have such a short, a small little window there?
Actually, when you, when you build adjacent to a property line, your contractor will be required to construct netting or scaffolding to protect the adjacent structures. So we'll have that requirement in our construction specifications as well.
Is, is that just normal, or is that something we have to add to our resolution?
That's standard.
That's standard? Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next witness.
Thank you. Call this site engineer, William Fitzgerald. He was previously qualified and previously sworn.
No, I just need a second to set up. But I can swap some of the stuff back there. Is that? Madam Chair, I can talk while I'm setting, no, I can try, you know?
That's, that's up to your, that's up to your attorney.
Three, have a full board.
Okay.
Oh.
That's fine.
Wait a minute.
Jack, do you want to, sworn again?
Yeah, just wait a minute. Okay. Finish with the vows. That's just right here. Yeah, come on. Don't tell me this isn't going to work with this. That's not really doing it for me. I can't get over this. Just eighteen times today, John. Huh? There we go. Hi, Madam Chair, if I could, I'll go right to the key issue.
You can enter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is William E. Fitzgerald. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm the site engineer for this project. I was here last.
You have your right hand. You signed and swear affirm the testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Fitzgerald's previously sworn, I'm sorry, previously qualified.
And sworn.
And so what are, what are we going to be reviewing? Are we reviewing?
Okay, so to address your opening comments.
Yes.
Okay, we had submitted, I believe, on, on April, I'm sorry, August 5th, a false submission. And then about 10 days before, no, a little bit more than that, 14 days before the hearing, we received the engineer's review.
Right, on the 21st.
Which dealt with stormwater.
Yes.
So there were any number of ways to handle that. What we did was chose to try to take the recommendation and comply with it to the letter.
Okay.
And so that was erased that week, but we got it in 10 days before the hearing so that if you, if you're satisfied with the presentation this evening, you're authorized to vote on that.
Well, the thing is, is that what we have to, I have to understand if our engineer is satisfied that he had enough time to review the information, and if he did, we can go. But if he didn't have enough time, we may have to come back and, once he gets a chance to review it, and create a new report. Or an addendum to the report, I should say.
I'll jump on that. So you.
Wait a minute. Raise your right hands. I know, you signed and swear affirm the testimony about giving this man the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please state your names for the record and your respective positions with the board.
Samuel Avanti.
Tom Dogg, fourth letter.
Thank you. Okay, sure. So thank you, Madam Chair. So I, how it had transpired, and if it's all right with you, I'll kind of explain what my concerns were, maybe that'll help a little bit. So the second submission, through the revision, on August 1st, the plans were, there's a subsurface infiltration basin. The water was going to be collected from the roof and the drainage from your parking lot, even though it's covered. Going to the subsurface basin, from there, it's going to be pumped out into an inlet. That's okay, that's acceptable, it's not a problem. Where my hiccup was, is that they had an infiltration basin trench, infiltration trench beneath the basin that was pretty much at the season high water table. So my concern was, hey, if you're at the season high water table, I should build, do you mind going to, I don't know if you have those plans?
I do.
It was sheet, sheet 11.
I think it's 12, they want to see.
These are revised plans, Bill?
Okay, so if I might.
So I'll just finish up, these are the revised plans, yes.
Okay, so let's make this AA3.
So the board will look at the top, where you see a little trench, what that is, is a basin, and the trench right there originally was designed to be at the season water level. Well, my hiccup was, my concern was that water would be coming into the basin, being pumped onto the city's infrastructure, potentially inundating the system. Yep. So what Bill and I, Bill had read my letter, had called, he and I had talked about it, I'm comfortable with what he has submitted to an extent. I would say that finalize plans, look at the details, you know, any notes that come up should be submitted, and I could submit a letter in a condition of resolution stating that that was finalized.
That the stormwater management is to your?
Yes, if you're okay with that, I think that's fine.
You know, stormwater management is.
Big ticket.
It's near and dear to my heart.
Hundred percent, and that's why.
How early do you want to go to sleep tonight?
As long as I'm, if I, the only way I can go to sleep at night is with stormwater management taken care of.
I'll let Bill harp on what he redesigned, but what he had done, and he'll testify to it though, is raise the bottom of that basin to be two feet from the season high. What that does is make me feel more comfortable that there's going to be no water inundation into that basin. So the design stayed the same as the functionality, logistically though, it was just shrunk in depth, but Bill will testify to that.
All right. Okay, so if I may, what we just identified as exhibit A3, if I got it correctly.
AA3.
AA3, I'm sorry. Is a combination of two things, is a combination of the eight sheet plan set that was filed on August 5th, and the five sheets, three sheets, I'm sorry, that I filed on August 30th, to address the stormwater comment that in my mind was a make it or break it, if you agreed with Sam's position, which I didn't, but not an issue. Having said that, you've already seen with the architectural plan, this is the third sheet of the submission, and that nothing changed on that relative to what the architect showed you. We have only the one ingress egress driveway on Avenue A, we now have 20 stalls, we have 36 bicycle stall split between, it would be the south, I'm so confused on this, southeasterly corner, rear corner of what would be the Turf Club, and the southwesterly corner of this particular site, and I think the architect talked about the general issues in the circulation plan. This is AA3. This is a combination, okay, so. Oh, yes. So if you take the large plan that we gave you.
This came in today around midday.
It seems to have the same date on it, but just be small.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're looking at. What we've submitted is.
It's this one.
They use the big one, and then he's just going to have a couple extra slides about stormwater, right?
Yeah.
So there were images of exhibits that would be presented in tonight's testimony, it was an email that came in at 3:24 PM.
Okay, so is that what that is? I'm sorry, wait.
Is that correct, Bill, just to reduce size?
I have to see. I'm sorry. I think you want to use the large sheets, and then I can explain the difference between AA3 and M, which is very minimal. Okay, so right now I'm looking at the third sheet of your large site plan, which is the layout plan. Okay, and as the architect went through, you understand how the building works, the one driveway from Avenue A, the 20 parking stalls, the bicycle storage behind Turf Club, and also at the southwesterly corner of the, underneath portion of this site. Okay, what we provided, knowing how the building changed as to accessing refuse and storage, of refuse and recyclables, we relocated the barrier free stall from where I had it in an earlier submission, and put it at a spot where we could have a continuous sidewalk across the barrier free, I'm sorry, across the parking area that would have a barrier free ramp at either end, so someone could exit the southerly facade of the building proper, walk across the parking lot with recyclables, and deposit them in the storage room. Okay, and the planner has asked for a crosswalk to be striped across here, we have no problem with that. Planner has also asked for depressed curbs, we have them. Asked for signage to keep people out of these places, on the north side, that's an access aisle for a barrier free stall, it is signed per state and federal requirements. On the south side, I can put a no parking anytime sign, I believe it's R 7-4 under the manual and uniform traffic control devices. There are curb cuts on both sides, they're only five feet wide, so nobody can drive up on the sidewalks without mounting a curb. Now, the next sheet, on your 11 by 17 submission, is my grading and utility plan. And fundamentally, it shows where the sanitary sewer, where the water, where the gas is coming in, and we show the electric coming overhead from a nearby pole to the southerly building, I guess it would be the storage room, right behind the stair, the stairwell. That can be, depending on how it's worked out with the utility company, it can be underground, it's a short run either way, but I just wanted to show where it would be coming from more than anything, because that was one of the comments. The main thing is that in the previous submission, the sanitary sewer was all under the building overhang. The next sheet is the sheet I submitted on August 30th. You don't have that, that I know of, but it's the same previous sheet, and the only real change to that is that I've taken the sanitary sewer. Is that going too many? There's a sheet missing. Okay, what's happened is, I'm sorry, somehow this got really screwed up. Bear with me.
So that's one of the three sheets.
Okay, one of the three that came in is I took this sanitary sewer, which is under the building, I took the westerly portion of it, and I moved it just outside, or just east of the overhang of the building. And I did that because I needed to make the area, I had, to comply with Sam's comment, regarding stormwater, I had to shrink the depth of the basin. To get the same storage volume, I had to make the area bigger. I was trying to keep the area under the building between the columns, and not encroach on the community garden area, which would have been easy to do with a rural net. So what we did is, somebody took this sanitary sewer, pushed it out here, that was the stormwater basin that we originally had. The new one simply extends a little farther westerly, a little farther easterly, and it's a T-shaped, it goes into these two bays between the columns that I'm outlining here. By doing that, I was able to get a larger surface area, if you will, so I was able to shrink the depth and accommodate Sam's request for more space between the bottom of that basin and the seasonal high water table. You should also know that the seasonal high water table doesn't raise very often above that, because that is what it is, it's the high, it's not the normal. Having said that also, this bed is.
If you're going to say, then you should say that it was also directly at the base of your basin.
No, it was a half a foot almost.
It was maybe two tenths, so let's.
Yeah, all right, but what I want to say is that regardless of the city stormwater ordinance, the state now requires that I use something like 11.9 inches for the future 100-year storm, and we also have that in the same separation, so it's never going to be a problem. As to the inundation, the potential inundation, that's eliminated by this design, I don't believe it was ever an issue, but there's no point in beating that to death at this point. So just to make it easy for you, this is a section through longways and crossways, that basin, which looks like this in plan, and what we simply did was shrink this and extend the depth of the infiltration trench. And the reason we have that, Sam had made a comment, why don't you consider wrapping it in like a landfill fabric, so we're here at the shore, and so you've got two problems. You've got, we've got to deal with stormwater management, but you've got saltwater intrusion. And part of the reason you have that is because the amount of impervious cover, water's not getting into the ground down here. So I didn't want to eliminate the infiltration trench, because in my professional opinion, I think it's just as important to get water into the ground here, so you don't have saltwater intrusion, or you at least try to, you know, do what you can. The rest of it is really just, I'd like to address the planners and engineers' issue as expeditiously as I can, because we really have no problems with it at all, with them at all. One of the things Sam had asked for, and I believe it was submitted, but to be sure, we'll get signed, sealed copies in to the board secretary as soon as we can. I'm referring to his letter of, I hadn't quite got there yet, April 29th, revised August 21st. Okay, and his comment, I believe it was the first comment, the checklist is asking for a survey of utilities and structures and et cetera within 200 feet. And I thought we had submitted that, we certainly have it, I have it up here as an exhibit, which I sent to Maurice, so just so she'd have it for the record, but we'll formalize it tomorrow. The survey was done, if it's not in the file, we'll make sure you get signed, sealed copies into file. With regard to statement, do you want me to go through every statement, or can I summarize a little bit?
The ones that you have concern about.
Really, with stormwater, we talked about that, I just wanted to double back, the underground utilities, the services are going to be underground.
Yeah, we can try to get the JCPN.
Yeah, they have to be underground.
Yeah, well, yeah, so they don't have a choice, and they know that. I just didn't want to speak for them.
For sure.
Okay, I believe.
Just so the board knows, touching on this, there is a pretreatment that goes into an aspect.
We have.
So they do have, and I just want to say also that you could grab the, they don't need it, just being the height of their building, there's no trees around, I just wanted to say that it wasn't quite necessary, that was in my letter as well. As long as the notes get fun of the plan, as far as stormwater, we're okay.
All right, so there was a question about site triangle, because I have a tree planted at the corner of Atkins and Adams. Adams is one way west. My tree is at the southeast corner of the site, or near the southeast corner of the site. If someone is heading south on Atkins and needs to look at oncoming traffic, he's looking to the east, and, let me get this, yeah, he's looking to the east, and he's looking to the south, and the tree is not in a line of sight that would affect anything. Item 12, we're looking for a planting spec, and we have that, and I'll try to address one of Donna's concerns at the same time. I have a planting preparation spec for the street trees on the planting plan. Donna said that I didn't address it, she cited, I think, 30-5612, there is none, it's 30-57. Not to be outdone, on my plan, I said it was 36-57. Having said that, we're talking about the same thing, and we have no problem putting the, if you want, we have to reference the correct spec.
But do we, did we, do we have that?
Okay, well.
The planting?
Here's what we have. I'm telling you, I have a mistake on one. All right, beneath the plant materials schedule are two notes, and one of them, I'm trying to refer to the ordinance spec that she wants.
That's fine.
And I have it called out wrong, I'll change it from a 36 to a 30, and we'll be set.
But, so we have the, what are the plantings? So we have what, two trees?
Well, okay, so to be correct, we originally showed 10 trees, then we had a technical review meeting with Donna and Sam, and the suggestion was made, why don't you make the trees linear along the streets, and provide the anisement for them, which we did. And that caused me to reduce the trees, and the stormwater was a killer, and I just, both times, I just missed a note that, I'm calling out 10 trees in a table, we only have eight on the site, we need to provide two, either by direct contribution or monetary contribution, as required under the ordinance and allowed.
Okay.
Unless you want to see more, this was a plan that we sort of talked about.
If our professionals are happy with what your discussions were, then, I don't know if our board.
So Donna's report, you said this requires a design exception for street trees. What is the exception?
The exception is that we don't have, we don't have what the ordinance requires as a minimum, and.
Enough, or is it, I mean, it seems like here, specifically on Avenue A, there's none, but it's so tight.
Yeah, no room to put them. So I have an overall view, if you want to see it, of the entire neighborhood from Google. There aren't many street trees, so we're not, any street trees we provide are in character with what's there, by virtue of the fact we're providing more than are generally in the neighborhood.
But can we just go one more time, sorry?
Sure.
One more time. Why is there, why are the street trees an exception? Because.
They're not proposing the number required by the ordinance, and it is 57, I was wrong.
Okay.
Right. Is that what the, is that what the deal was?
I have six, I'm sorry, one, two, I have six on the plan, so we need, we need to make amends for four, which the ordinance permits a contribution of money to the street tree fund, which applicant we do.
So.
Or, again, you know, the C1 criteria, basically your design exception criteria, there's not enough room, there's not enough room.
Right, if there isn't enough room, but that's, I will leave that to you guys to kind of work that out. If there is enough room, it has to go, there has to be a contribution to the fund, but if there is enough room, I think that it would be nice for the neighborhood to have more trees.
We're okay with that, the issue is that the only place you can really put them, Madam Chair, is on, along Atkins, and a short area of Adams. They'd be much closer than 30 feet. I personally don't have any problem, but they tend to struggle a little bit if they're too close, especially in a city environment, because they don't get as much water, and you know, you want to have the community garden along the Atkins area also, so if I can pop three more trees on there, we're no problem.
Or to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission for their preferences, to have a number of trees, and maybe smaller trees.
You can.
We have no preference.
If you're planting a garden along Atkins, you're having, that's the east exposure, you're getting, you're getting the light from the east. You don't want those trees, because those trees will shade the garden, which is self-defeating. So those three trees on Atkins, I suspect you don't want to put them there. If you're going to.
Or we go with a small tree instead of a large street tree.
If you take the look out here, this community garden, right outside the wall here, you'll see that you don't want to put those trees, you'll impede the growth in the garden, even small trees. You'll see here on the, on the front, on the north edge of this, you have a couple of fruit trees, and they cast a lot of shadow, and behind that, the growth in those beds are much more retarded than they are further to the south.
We're amenable to work this out. I chose European hornbeams for these four trees along Adams and Atkins, because they're very narrow, very common, but we can work it out, certainly don't want to do anything to hurt the garden once it's there.
Yeah, that's self-defeating. I would suggest with those trees, be eliminated quickly.
Well, that's really, I think that might be, you want to go to the Environmental Shade Tree, let them duke it out?
I'll pass that out, I'm on the Shade Tree Commission.
Oh, there you go, see?
Well, yeah, so maybe, you know, a meeting with the folks who operate the community garden, and see if there's a spacing or a.
You're perfect for it.
I also built a bedstone, so.
So there you go, he's perfect for it.
But as far as the design exception for not having enough trees.
That's fine.
It seemed, you know, in the plan you proposed, it looks like there's a right number of trees on Atkins and Springwood, and maybe the ones on Atkins will go away. I mean, we just can't get trees on Avenue A and Adams, so it's, I mean, I don't know what to do.
So it is what it is.
The. The question I did have was on Springwood, Sam's report said something about the sidewalk into being.
Okay, so you can't have less than five feet of sidewalk, in order to put the two trees on Springwood that we show, and the proper planting bed, we reduced that to something like four foot 10 inches instead of five, which is, for people walking, it doesn't make a, for a tree looking to get water in that environment, I think, in my own people opinion, the. the pointer went to the trees.
It is de minimis, so one to four feet age is very de minimis, but it is under the five, so we want.
Okay.
Okay, a number of the next comments are either statements, or compliance is there, so it's not anything that we need to worry about. Number 18, Sam wanted three notes added to the plan, I didn't see the third one was on the top of another page, so I got two, I'll add the third, that was my mistake, 19, 20, 21, again, we will provide, or 19 and 20, we'll provide anything by way of easements or operation and maintenance manuals, if it's approved, there's no point putting that in formality, at this point, it's not approved yet. Applicant, I believe, has provided the parking agreement for the extra parking, remember, we talked about shortage of spaces, there's 20 on the site, I believe there's 43 required, so there's a net shortage, with all the credits, there's a net shortage of 23 stalls, they would be obtained via an access or a parking agreement with the Mount Piscata Church, which is nearby, across Springwood Avenue, a block to the, I gotta get this right, a block to the east, and it's within, the whole parking area is within 400 feet of the front entrance, which complies with the ordinance.
Alright, well, that, that has to be part of the resolution compliance, that we see that agreement.
Yes, it would be a condition subsequent.
Right, it's a condition that we'll have, is someone going to actually walk us through the parking, or was that it?
The off-site parking?
No, the, yes, the off-site parking, because we said that, you know, we gained a couple of spaces because of the, the, what do you call that, we don't need as much driveway, that we have EV, and then you're subtracting things, so who's going to walk through that?
Well, the net shortage, okay, well, I believe it's in Donna's letter pretty well.
Okay, let's go to Donna's line.
I'm looking at page six of 21, of the most recent letter, which was revised to August 29th. And on page six, off-street parking is down to bottom, item 42, and Donna outlines what's needed, and tabulates it on the top of page seven, and notes that with the 20, 49 are totally required, 20 are provided on site, 29 is a deficiency, however, there's a shared parking agreement, and I believe some credits for EV-type chargers, within, we have five EV double chargers within the parking area, they're mounted to the columns, and they can serve a car on, they'll serve two cars simultaneously. Yes, they're dual chargers. Yeah, technically 10 EV charging stations within the parking area, so that leaves a net deficit of 23.
Okay, so just one, just for clarity, are these make-ready EV, or are these real EV, you're, you're in day one, and you're plugging it in?
I can't tell you that, I just drew the cartoon.
I need to have an understanding, we need, we need to plug them in day one, then the credits, then I feel better about the credits, as opposed to make-ready, you know?
The EV charging station will be in day one, but the net need, off-site EV 23 does not take into account EV stations, it's just, it's just the credit for the residential units sharing when the day is not used.
There's two bits, you get the credit for the sharing, but the EV charging credit is based on how many spaces are required, or required.
I don't think that the EV credits, they're not needed, and they're not included in the net need off-site. If we were included, the net need off-site would be reduced by five.
Understood, you could amend your agreement so you don't need so many spaces, but if you want to have those spaces, that's fine, it's no change.
For the record, just so we're clear, that was Mr. McKeeverly speaking.
So, so we're all, alright, we're good with the parking, we need the, we just need the letter. And I don't know how that letter works, but it's kind of like ad infinitum, so it's like, this letter is forever. That there are that many spaces forever, because it's not like, what is it, like, you can't do like five years, you can't do like 10 years.
It has to be perpetual.
It has to be.
For as long as the project exists.
For as long as that building exists.
Right, the useful life of the building is 40 years, and what we've negotiated is a 40-year lease agreement.
Okay, is that what we have to do in this situation?
I'll add something in, that at the end of 40 years, the building's still being used, you've got to still provide those spaces.
I can't call you on it.
I won't have a problem with it. Alright, so we need to have something in resolution compliance about that. Alright, so we need some sort of a letter of resolution compliance.
Yeah, there'll be a lease agreement that John will submit to me, I'll review it, and it'll be a condition of approval.
Okay, both professionals, engineer in comment 46, planner in 4.1, are looking for a lot consolidation, recommending it, we have no problem with it, if it's approved, if it's not approved, there's no point doing that. Moving on to the planner, we talked about MUTCD signage for 42V, parking setback 43, oh, I'm sorry, deficit, where would we put a, we can handle signage to advise potential that there's parking off-site.
We need that.
I think that should be worked out, whether it's going to be building signage of an architectural nature, or MUTCD signage, which would be near the entrance driveway on Avenue A, would be a logical place.
Right, right, right.
I have no preference.
Is that something we need in resolution compliance, or?
Well, we're agreeing to put it as long as you're happy with it, so.
Sort of aesthetically.
Okay, 4.3G says there is a possible setback requirement for parking, it's not, they're 5.83 feet in the latest plan, that's where they'll be, so they're not, parking along Avenue A is five, is setback five feet, as is parking along Adams, okay, at least. We looked, 4.3H has to do with loading areas, and we've had them on the site, we removed them to save the backing out, and the driveway cuts, and the dumpsters in the front yard, and the whole thing, and now we are simply relying, this does not have an intensive loading drop-off type use, so we can rely on, we feel we can rely on available curb space, and not have to provide a dedicated loading area and a loading driveway, et cetera, so if that's a waiver, then we're looking for it for that reason. As I said earlier, 4.3I, we said we'd provide the crosswalk within the area, under the, parking area under the building. 5.1A talks about streetscape and possibly benches, and things like that, we have no problem, but there's no area between those right-of-way lines on Adams and on Atkins Avenue, between the right-of-way lines and the edge of the sidewalk, there's no place. Now, we did, in compliance with some of the recommendations, if the board wants it, we haven't had a street tree easement, along both of those, within which the street trees are shown, the easement is also shown as a dotted line, we could put benches in there and change the nature of the easement, it's a question of whether you want benches or not.
Do we think that we might want to buy the garden?
I mean, that can be, again, worked out.
You know, and not, you know, not aid on the side.
Yeah, somewhere, so there might be.
Maybe instead of the trees by the, by the garden, we'd put, we'd put benches.
Sure, why don't we work that out, to get, you guys, whatever preference, applicant has no problem with any of it.
Yep.
Is the garden fenced? No, right?
Okay. Springwood Avenue, I don't know if you want benches there or not, but again, that can be part of whatever we agree. I wouldn't think you'd want bicycle racks for the reason that, the only way that you're going to be able to get them on there is the bicycles are going to be encroaching all over the sidewalks, you're not going to be able to move. We have, we have 36, the ones particularly behind the Turf Club building are actually very visible to the street, and easily accessible, and probably won't be totally utilized by occupants of the building at any given time, so doesn't seem like there's no, any reason they couldn't use them.
Alright, I'd like to, I'd like to just announce now, we have, you have 10 more minutes before our next application begins at 9 o'clock.
I'm going as fast as I can.
I'm just saying that it's gonna, it's okay, you don't have to go fast, it's okay.
Well, you have to.
You're coming back, it's okay.
Okay, 62, this one we didn't like, this one, comment by the planner, recommended that the planting along the southerly wall, where we have the refuse storage, any egress from the second stairway, be planted similar to the Springwood, which is very, very low, not higher than 15, 18 inches. I look at, so I'm showing you clips from the architect's elevations, the Springwood, the Adams, the lower one being the Adams, it's a three-story building with absolutely nothing of interest back there, and we really thought that something a little larger. Now, what I've shown you, we've called out two kinds of trees, we called out a very tailed juniper, which get to about 15, 16 feet, and no wider than three and a half, four feet at the most, within a five-foot area, and we called out skip laurel, and I've shown you some I've had at Monmouth University for approaching 20 years, none of them has gotten wider than five feet, although admittedly, the ones at Monmouth are pruned, they're pruned. However, when I look at this, I can show you another exhibit that comes from Missouri Botanical Garden, that documents the maximum width of these, why don't we just remove the skip laurel, and put these tailored tunips all the way across, because they, they have some size to them, so they'll break up that wall vertically a little bit. That's what I would offer, and you don't, then you don't have to worry about maintenance or safety. No?
So it's, do you want it to just look like?
That.
We're screening a wall, or is it an entrance? You want it to be complimentary foundation planting, or do you want it to just screen the wall? It's, you know, subjective.
Why don't we look at this, why don't we do something that gives you a little more vertical, and a little variation, so it's not like screen walls, but not as short as the Springwood Avenue, I mean, the Springwood Avenue entrance, you know, the architect is not, is not trying to give you exactly what it'll look like, but they're all 15, 18-inch maximum plants, so I can go three or four feet, one or two sixes, I can make it a little more interesting, I just didn't want, didn't think it was appropriate to screen that big three-story wall with 18-inch plants, this doesn't have the glass facade.
What is, what is our planter?
I would, I would suspect that that solution would be better, if you put nothing but trees that are going to grow 15 feet, it gets pretty monotonous pretty quickly, so if you could vary that a bit, and at the, at the, at the actual entrance to the stairway, you have a lower planting, you could fan that out, lower to a higher.
Well, see, I don't have any real room to do this kind of thing, I can't do.
I understand that, what I'm saying is, if you, your low plantings, and I'm saying low, maybe two, three feet, four feet, near the entrance to the stairway, and then you
In the middle, of the two panels.
I mean, if you want to screen, if you put this whole plant, I do the feeling the purpose of applying the differentiation, the color of the bottom of the building? You're hiding it, and why you're managing it.
Alright, I'm going to suggest that, that you guys discuss, because we're coming back, so.
If we're coming back, we brought a lighting expert tonight, could I just call him, he'll be very brief.
You have, literally, you have five minutes, but we still have not questioned the witness, we don't have, we don't have that time, I'm sorry.
You know, I understand my interpretation, since you want Mr. Fitzgerald to come back.
Well, we also have a public that has.
To question him.
To question him, and we have literally five minutes, because this other application is going on at 9, and we need a moment to set up, so literally, you have five minutes, not lighting, we have to finish with Mr. Fitzgerald, or not, he can come back, because we're not, we're not done, okay, alright.
Can I just ask, does the board always agree with Mr. Henry's suggestion of kind of modifying that backlight scaping to be complement the doorway a little bit more, and need to, and the rest is okay?
Okay, so we're coming back with Mr. Fitzgerald and lighting, and, is there anything else that we're?
What I was going to ask, because since Mr. Fitzgerald's coming back anyway, the public can question him next time, could I?
Yes, they can come, because we don't have the time at this point, we have to, we have to end.
Lighting will be very.
We have to end, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alright.
Sorry, it's not fair to the other application. I'm sorry.
What can we carry this on the record, at least?
Oh, yes, absolutely, what?
The other thing we needed was a staging plan.
Right, we need a staging plan also?
That usually is Donna, James, and the applicant posted.
Okay.
Lots of them provided here too, but.
If we're coming back.
We're coming back, staging plan, please.
I have it in here as a condition, but yeah, you need a staging plan to work out with James, with your construction station.
Alright, alright, so what's our date that's available, is it October?
Are we talking Donna, revisions?
Alright, actually, that's true, are there revisions that have to be made to your letters?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so if there are revisions that have to be made, then we have to give Mr. Avakian enough time, so if the next meeting is not good enough, it has to be the following. Do we have time? Do we have your date?
I could, I can, with the review I've already done, I can get a letter to you by the next meeting if that's what you want.
Well, it has to be with enough time for the planning board to look at it, so if we want to do it.
Our next available at this point is October 28th.
No, but, but Mr. Avakian was saying that he could get it done, early enough, so he doesn't need the full span of time. So we could do it the next meeting?
September 23rd.
Yes. Anything there?
Donna, you won't need anything?
Donna's okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, let's do it, let's do it on the 23rd.
23rd.
If Mr. Avakian's comfortable with the timeline of the report, okay.
23rd of September?
Yep, alright, as long as you guys are available.
Jim is not available, but Allison is.
Okay, alright, alright, let's get a motion to carry this application to September 23rd without further notice.
Second?
Sorry, motion was by Daniel, second this night.
Okay, James Benano?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo? Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you for making those changes, they were very helpful. Okay, we have a five-minute recess, okay, so we're going to start up, actually, we're going to start up at 9, okay, so everybody ready, giddy up. I will now take roll call, James Benano?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Eric Alipo is absent, Jim Henry?
Here.
Jerry Hoffman, Jeremy Hoffman absent, Mayor Moore absent, Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Here.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Here.
Alright.
Okay, Madam Chair, I reviewed the notices for this application, they're in proper form, we have jurisdiction to proceed.
Okay, just so that we're clear, for everyone here, and the public, that 10 o'clock is our deadline, we tend to leave at 10, so have at it.
Understood, we appreciate you taking us on this evening, for the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith, I'm an attorney with Givens PC, and I'm here tonight on behalf of APW, we developer, and as my partners, as co-applicants. We are here this evening for a proposed project for block 4306, lots 1 through 8, it's proposed to be 45 townhomes, currently the lot is vacant, we're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, minor subdivision, and certain design exceptions from the waterfront redevelopment plan. We're going to try and be as efficient as possible this evening, we will overall have four witnesses, we'll start with architecture, then we'll move to landscape, architecture, then engineering, then end with our planner, as I said, we'll get through as much as we can this evening. This has been a long road for this project, we applied to the TRC in August of 2023, and appeared before the TRC almost a year ago today, on September 12th of 2023. Taking into account the TRC's comments, we significantly revised the plans, particularly the exterior elevations, and worked with the city's professionals to present those plans to the city council, and then continued to refine them, until finally, it was approved by the city council in June of this year. We are here with those plans this evening. There are some questions that came up in the review letters about whether we did comply with the TRC comments, and whether we complied with the subsequent developer agreement, I will say that we have testimonies. I will say that we have testimonies this evening that we believe we have, and we'll explain why. And while there may be some discrepancies between the plans, we can explain what the intent was and how we believe we have complied with the intent. So without anything further, I'd like to start with our architecture testimony.
Okay. Sir, please, Mr. Henry, solidly swear affirm testimony about Givens matter of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
First name Adrian, A-D-R-I-A-N. Last name Melia, M-E-L-I-A.
Mr. Melia, if you could, for the board, discuss your education, experience, and licensure.
Certainly. So I'm a partner at MVMK Architecture. We're based in Hoboken. I graduated from Trinity College Dublin, Ireland in 2002. I've been licensed in New Jersey since 2011, and I've appeared in front of numerous planning and zoning boards throughout the state. I was also presented for the TRC for this project in Osprey.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Melia as an expert in the field of architecture.
Are all your licenses up to date?
Yes, they are at the current.
Okay, in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay.
While we're doing that, why don't we get our staff sworn in in case there's any corrupt we go back before it. Please raise your right hand, solidly swear affirm testimony about Givens matter of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board. Samuel Avakin, the board is here.
I don't know. Your word, man.
Thank you. Here's yours, gentlemen.
Wonderful. So just one housekeeping matter. We're going to be talking about this map up on the screen briefly. We did submit this more than 10 days prior, and I guess we should probably mark it?
Yes, whatever you're going to testify from, I need it.
Perfect.
As an exhibit.
This is a three-page PDF. The map is the first page. The photo exhibits, which we'll get to later, the second and third page, we'll mark the packet together as A1.
Got that, Murray? Okay.
Excellent. Can you please orient the board to the site in question?
Certainly. So Block 4306 is bounded by four streets, Kingsley, Webb, 7th and 8th avenues, and our site takes up the entire block. It's currently vacant, as was previously stated. And I'll just describe the surrounding conditions so you get a sense of what the context is. Directly to the north, we have a five-story multifamily. And slightly further north, we have another seven-story multifamily building. Slightly to the west, there's another two-story development of condominiums. Working our way around to the northeast, we've got the Asbury Tower, which is a 27-story high-rise. And then directly across Kingsley, we have a water treatment plant, parking, and the remainder of the lot is vacant. Then, as we move further south, we have the North Shore, which is an eight-story condominium development. And directly to the south, across 7th Avenue, and we've got some three-story multifamily structures. And right here, it looks like a vacant lot in this area, but you'll see, we do actually have a photo of what is there currently, which is a newly constructed five-story building. Just going back to the map, everything to the west of Webb Street is one and two-family, predominantly one and two-family, three-story structures. So you can see there's a variety of different scales around the site.
One thing before you continue, can you just go back, please?
Sure.
On the, on the site that is on the north side, that is vacant right now, there is something going up there. Do we recall what it is?
I can speak briefly to that. So we have applied to the TRC, and we'll be appearing for the city council this week.
Okay, so it's not, it's, okay. So do we know how high that's going to be? Actually, it doesn't really matter. That is a site that's going to be developed. So that has to come into play when, this part of your presentation. At least for me.
Okay.
I like to see what's all around to make sure that, you know, how's everybody being impacted? So we'll keep that in mind.
So that building will be a condominium-style building, not a townhome-style building. Actually, it's two buildings, because on that particular lot, one in each corner.
Oh, yes, that's the one that, okay, I got you.
I was going to say, you were...
Yes, I remember, I remember now.
Yeah.
There are too many of them. Okay, I remember them. Okay, thank you.
All right.
So as was stated, this site's vacant. It's currently mostly grass. There's a small area where there is a paved surface, and it's accessed off Webb, where cars park at some point.
Excellent.
And then here's just some photos.
We can have Mr. Barry go through them in greater detail, kind of at the end. If you'd like to start describing what our proposal is for the 45-town homes.
Sure. So I'm going to refer to the architectural submission, which is dated August 5, 2024.
Do you want us to mark that entire package then as A2?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the submitted architectural plans.
So the first sheet's just the list of drawings.
What was the date again on that?
It's August 5, 2024. So the second sheet, it's a site plan. It gives an overall view of what we're planning to do here. It's 45 townhomes. There'll be 114 spaces provided, where only 68 are required. Each of these garages will have an EV capability. And one more note to make that's important is that all of the on-street parking, there's 45 spaces currently, that number will not change, will stay 45. So you can see here that the 45 townhomes are divided into six buildings. What is permitted is between four and eight stories across the entire site, with the exception of Webb, which is only permitted to be three stories. And so we're proposing three stories on Webb to satisfy that, and four stories everywhere else.
Just so I got that correctly, parts of this lot could be developed up to eight stories, correct?
Correct.
But we are not going above four, correct?
No, we're staying at four.
So it does say, so you mean, there's three stories that are, I guess, parallel to Webb?
Correct.
But the ones that go south, there, Eighth Avenue, that do go to Webb, also front on Webb, there for...
Yes, the massing in the redevelopment plan shows that the ones that are front on to 7th and 8th can be four stories, but ones that front on to Webb can only be three stories.
So that's allowed, or is that a way...
This is permitted.
The development control plan shows the corners at higher elevations, and the middle of the block is three stories.
So with the exception of this five-unit cluster, all of the townhouses, there's two types. There's one, the one at the ends, and then the ones in the center. The one at the ends are slightly larger, they're about 2,400 square feet each, and then the ones in the center of each cluster are around 2,000 square feet. Just to talk a little bit about the evolution of this project, it was mentioned earlier that we were here a year ago, and we've gone to great lengths to evolve the most prominent of the elevations. And those are the ones that are on the intersections of Kingsley and 7th and 8th Avenue. You can see this rendering here, it's Kingsley and 8th. And what was most concerned to the TRC was the treatment of how the side of the townhome, because it's very prominent from the corner view. So we went through a multitude of design iterations and finally arrived at this one, which is what the city council finally approved. This is obviously taken into account not just the TRC, the council, but also city planning staff and consultants' comments as well. Another note to make, just a general note, is that the overall architectural aesthetic here, it advances the design principles set forth in Section 2.2, which is the redevelopment objectives of the Asbury Park Waterfront Redevelopment Plan by developing new residential buildings that extend Asbury Park's oceanside character in a contemporary way. So that box is checked by doing this. The proposed shingle style, lap style, and board and batten cladding references are, you may have heard, a traditional shore aesthetic. But in this context, we've presented a curbside appearance that is emblematic of a newer coastal architecture by providing clean lines and larger windows, because we're trying to get that open and airy feel into the architecture. You can see from the color palette, the color variation, that by varying the shade colors, as well as the heights of these bays all along Kingsley and 7th and 8th Avenue, that the proposed facade design becomes dynamic and also gains dimensionality, well, maintaining a balanced overall composition. So it's busy enough to break up the scale to a human scale, but not overly so.
Mr. Melia, I don't mean to interrupt, because I know you're going through your spiel, but on the end corner lots, they're all have front porches? Is that correct?
Correct. The end ones have porches.
So I just want to throw out, Jennifer, so the creative plans, I know we'll get to the scenario, but that doesn't drive, there's discrepancy there. So if we could just add, that's what's going to happen with this one.
Yes, and we will, as we go along, we know there are about, there are at least four discrepancies, and we're going to tell you which one, where the architecture was right versus...
I'll take every time.
No, it's okay. On this one, though, the architecture plans are correct. The stoops belong there, and the civil plans will be just updated to show the stoop.
So the materials being proposed, they're all durable, requiring no maintenance, especially in like a coastal climate. We're proposing hardy panel, shingle siding, lap siding, and board and batten siding. We're also proposing metal railings that the style has been selected based on the site's architectural and environmental context. So all building frontages will have substantial landscaping acting as a buffer, and that will be native planting and street trees. Landscape architect can talk more to that. The relationship to the street, so going back to the site plan, you can see that each of the clusters of townhomes is oriented directly to their respective streets. And the improvements in the right-of-way and the setback and buffered stoops and frontages are going to improve the walkable urbanism of the area, especially with front doors from each of these townhomes oriented toward the street. Again, I had mentioned that the main concern at the TRC was addressing the corners, specifically the treatance of the side, and how prominent those facades are. And what we did was, we added these pergola features to the top, just to kind of accentuate the corner presence along Kingsley. We also added more windows. A lot of these windows weren't necessary, but to avoid gaps, blank facades, they were put onto the elevations. As far as color palette goes, we went to great lengths to change this. There was a lot of gray and darker, blues and grays. We replaced those and increased the prevalence of white and beige siding. So the end result was a much brighter palette that I think is better suited to this coastal location.
So these are blues and, because it appears a green.
We replaced blues with greens.
With blue.
Yeah.
And on the setbacks on the other...
It varies, because the buildings are staggered, but they're approximately between five and 10 feet.
I believe in addressing the TRC's comments, the center building was reoriented, correct?
Yep. So again, on the site plan, this center cluster, it was facing the opposite direction. So this is where the front doors are, and there's a passage, which I'll have a rendering to show, between the two buildings fronting on to Kingsley. So it was reoriented so that from Kingsley, you could see the front of those buildings and not the rear.
And I know that there were comments that came up in CCH's reports concerning the retaining walls, the crosswalks, walkways, and lighting. We're going to have Mr. Leff and Mr. Curly address those specific, because they relate more to the site plan than the architecture. But I don't want you to think we forgot.
But one of the, just for clarity there, that where we see that person in the bicycle, I'm assuming that that does not exist, that parking like that does not exist here?
It's for best of people as parking.
Sorry?
That's the proposed parking, it's everything they have.
Oh, I don't, I don't see that.
You can protect a bike lane?
No, 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 I'm talking about where that bicycle person is there. It looks like there's parallel parking there.
Yeah.
Those are angle spaces for what? Because I don't see that on here. On the, on...
So we're on 8th Avenue as part of...
And still...
So, yeah, so street...
We have a, we have a civil site plan. That's more just to orient you to where the buildings are. The civil engineer has a full set of site plans that go into...
Probably lights on that.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll talk later, I guess. Go ahead.
So beyond this next slide, there's a couple of different renderings, just so that you understand that what every building fronting on to the streets looks like. This is a dusk shot of that same view on the last slide. Again, we added lights to further accentuate this facade, so you can see that in the daytime.
Are you going to be on the lighting there?
Yes.
So, because I noticed a lot of these are up lighting, the up and down lighting.
As shown here, yes, they're shown as up and down lighting here.
As always, we're going to need a lighting plan to find out what these spillages and all that kind of thing.
Mr. Curly.
Because there are residents that live around here.
Mr. Curly has a lighting plan. Continue.
So this next one, this is Kingsley Street. So this particular slide shows you the gap between the two buildings that front on to Kingsley Street. And you can see here, they'll be screened better than is shown in this rendering, but just for the purpose of showing you where the meters are, they're mounted to the side on the interior side of the building, so they're not on the outsides where they would be seen from the streets.
And I will just say, we realized today that the renderings show a mid-block crosswalk that is not part of the site plan. So that mid-block crosswalk's not there.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that sort of mini-site plan? Because, did you say the gray is what, the parking, the garage? Is that going to happen? That's the back?
This here is the box.
What's in Kingsley, right?
So this is the front. These are where the stoops and the front doors are facing Kingsley.
The gray is the driveways.
The gray is the driveway.
The dark gray is the driveways.
Right, so the, the second row behind the ones that front the, so the back of the house will be visible from Kingsley.
The back of which is?
No, it's the front of the house.
That's the front of the house.
The driveway.
That's the front. That's the front.
No, the ones that, so the second row, the ones that are parallel to Kingsley, the second row, the gray is the driveway, right? That's the back of the house?
Yes.
Correct.
So from Kingsley so forward, that's page 18, that Adderall? Somebody standing there can see the back.
That's Webb.
That's Webb.
I'm sorry. Webb. Yeah, I said, K, I'm sorry. Webb, they can see, it's not the front of the house instead of facing, it's the back.
Right. That one is facing, that's the front.
This is the front of the house?
That's the back.
That's the back.
That's the back.
That's the back, right? You're sitting here, you are saying, it's the two backs. I understand that. So from here, you see the back of the house, not the front of the house.
What you can see of it, yes. I'll give you that.
I'm going to continue through the elevations.
Yeah, just moving through some of the other renderings, so we have the dusk shot. This is a front-on view. Again, it's more clear than the rendering to get a sense of the building articulation with the staggered bays. Another dusk shot. And this is the 8th Avenue facade. So, again, it's virtually the same as the ones fronting onto Kingsley.
And all of the stairs and the block in the front of the house, is that all of it on top of the wall?
Correct. Onto sheet 11, and I won't dwell too long on this, but these are the floor plans. So, the, all of the four-story townhomes have rooftop balconies. It's on the next slide. See here, there's a large balcony in the back and one in the front. They're all four-bedroom units. All of the end units have two-car garages with two parking spaces in the driveway. And all of the interior units have only one car in the garage, and space for one car outside.
Can I, I, it seemed to be missing. I don't, I don't know if we have it, but these depictions on web. What does a web look like?
It's not that.
Because I don't, I don't think I see that here. Unless I'm missing that, what page would that be on?
It is page... Right here.
Oh, it's further, it's further, yeah.
This is web, I was gonna get.
I thought that would be with all the rest. Okay, we can wait, I don't, I don't need to move ahead. I just saw we were missing it.
Correct, so for the ones on the end that have a two-car garage, you can park two cars right outside, for all of the other. Exactly, so a total of four for the end units, and a total of two, one inside and one outside for the interior units.
You were on the floor plans.
So, that's... Just a... Quick depiction of the roof plan. See, we've got a air conditioning unit on top here, but it is screened by the power plant wall. You can see that in the renderings, that we've elevated that power plant to hide that air conditioning unit. Moving on, so the sheets 15 and 16 are colored elevations of the four-story townhomes. And on sheet 16, we do have the materials listed, we also have physical samples. Anybody needs to see them. This is the light type, we've got the building signage, it's gonna be outside the doors. And we've got all the materials listed with their colors. Just a note, one of the comments was that on the concrete wall at the base, we're gonna use a paracx finish, and that's not stucco. It's an acrylic coating with a texture to it, so there's no stucco proposed on the project.
And all that will be hidden by vegetation of some sort?
For the most part, yes. So, here's the rendering of Webb Street, and this is the three-story cluster of five townhomes. Again, everything else is four stories, the building in the middle is four stories, but Webb is three.
I can, do we have anything that shows, I see what, you're showing the middle. Is there something that shows me the corners of Webb? I'd just like to see where that is.
No.
Okay, so, because we wanna see what people that live on Webb, not Webb, but, what is that? Webb, what are they, what are they gonna see? That's what, that's, I'm guessing that many people wanna see that.
So, one of the, one of the earlier renderings, this one on Eighth Avenue.
Yes.
That gives you an indication of what's on the corner.
That's.
So, when this turns around, it will drop down to three stories.
Yeah, but we wanna see from the side, all of Webb.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, so when you come back, if we can see all of Webb, that would be great.
Just going back to the other, the elevations you were on, though, towards the end, where you left off, I'm sorry. So, the end of that building, which building is that?
So, this is the rear elevation of the Webb Building. But you're standing in the middle of the development, so I understand you wanna see the corner from Webb and Seventh and Eighth.
We wanna see it from the perspective of the west side of Webb, looking across the street.
That's right, that's right, that's what we wanna see, we wanna see the whole thing.
Yeah, we wanna see the whole picture.
Yep.
But we, we have shown all of Seventh Ave, Eighth Ave, and Kingsley, just for the.
Understood, understood, it's just sometimes it's perspective that, I get it, I mean, that's what we want.
It's similar without the pergola. This is what that corner looks like, and then you're stepping down, and this would be where the three building is, we do have a rendering for that. So, this, this here is the side, directly right behind here, it looks like a mirror of this. So, you're gonna see this, and then you're gonna see a step down, and then you're gonna see the three-story building on Webb.
When you come back.
Easily done with another rendering.
No, no, when you come back, he'll bring it, it's okay.
Just going to the three-story buildings, there was a question about whether they had rooftop decks. The three-story building, single building, has never been proposed with a, with a rooftop balcony, right?
Never.
Right, so, in the subsequent developer agreement under Building Program, it does say, with the exception of the single three-story townhouse building comprised of five townhomes, and then it goes on to describe the rest of the townhomes. So, while there's references to the rooftop balconies, the three-story building was never proposed to the TRC or the council with a rooftop balcony. Okay.
There's an exception within the plan for that, that you just quoted?
This is from the subsequent developer agreement.
Yeah, from that, subsequent redevelopment.
It, the narrative.
The three-story, the three-story from having.
Under Building Program, where it was described in the exhibit, says, with the exception of a single three-story townhome, townhouse building comprised of five townhouses, located along the center line of the city block adjacent to Webb Street, the remaining 40 townhomes are all supposed to be four stories in height with rooftop balconies. And then there are two paragraphs after that that describe.
I wanted to get it in proper context, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's just... Two paragraphs, or a paragraph after that.
Yeah, the next two paragraphs, though, describe the parameters for the, continue to describe the four-story townhomes, they're not describing the three-story townhome. So, for example, it goes on to say it's 2,400 square feet with some with two-car garages, and continues to go down, so that, that whole section is describing what the four-story townhomes look like, and they all have rooftop decks. The three-story building was never, never proposed or presented to the TRC or the council with a three-story, with a rooftop deck.
Two quick things with regard to operations, just bicycle parking came up, and how it would be accommodated in the garages. And there's a multitude of ways to accommodate bikes here. Do have an exhibit, if you need to see it, where they can be mounted to the wall, and they can swivel out of the way, or they can be mounted to the roof. But there's countless products on the market now for garages, especially ones that don't have a lot of ceiling height to tuck bikes away to the side, so.
And will they be incorporated in these garages, or it's gonna be up to the unit to purchase them?
We could certainly incorporate wall hooks.
It's, I don't know, was it my comment, I don't know if both of us had it, I brought a comment in the garage about bicycle parking, I believe that's what we're talking about. And it was just that, if you look at the, any of the renderings for the garages, it's just tight, when you have your garbage cans, your, you know, your cycling, so I brought up the comment of saying, hey, could there be some more space provided, or an area for bicycle parking? The architect is claiming that there, and there is, I 100% agree, apparatus is out there to put your bicycles on, and then it's just whether it's gonna be incorporated in these units or not.
And that's for the two-car garage units, for the one-car garage unit, there's more space, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a nook, and we, we show it, we show the 95-gallon container in both plans, but here it is, but there's ample room to put one of those wall-mounted bikes vertically up above the trash can. There's countless ways to accommodate bike parking in these garages.
So, the one-car garage has an extra nook, the two-car garage is already a two-car garage, but bicycles can be accommodated on hooks?
Yes.
Alright.
Mailboxes was another comment, I believe that's still it is on the civil plans.
Let's run through, then, the design exceptions quickly. So, to do this, I think the most efficient way is actually to refer to the report we received from CCH dated September 6th. So, I think the board will probably be able to follow along a little easier if we go to section 3.6B, which is on page nine. So, let's run through each of the design exceptions, and these are exceptions requested from the waterfront redevelopment plan. They're not variances, they're architectural design exceptions. So, if you could start with B1 for building articulation. Let's go ahead and mark this, so this is a design exhibit, but we're gonna mark another exhibit here. So, we'll mark this as Exhibit A3, can you tell us what this is?
So, this, it was recommended that we show examples from elsewhere in the redevelopment plan that also received these design waivers, so I just collated a bunch of images of different projects that have been constructed or under construction, that have the exact same features or waivers that we're proposing here.
Excellent. Alright, continue, then, to describe the designer waivers that are requested.
Okay, so, there's a short list here. Let's start with first one, fixed windows, so it's not that the windows don't operate, it's that we're trying to do larger windows, and when you're limited by how much of an opening you can have, so if you take this example here, you can see in either the Vive or the Cove that there's fixed windows underneath the operable windows. So, it's not that we have windows that just don't open, it's just that there's much larger windows that have windows mauled together, and some of those windows don't operate. We also have one or two windows at grade level in a garage, that for security reasons, they're fixed. But we've plenty of operable windows, we're just, not all of them are operable, because it doesn't make sense to do so, they're part of a larger window unit.
Well, let's, before we get into that list, I'd like to follow along in 3.6. The first one had to do with building articulation, and there's a question about.
Which page are you referring to?
This is page nine of 16 of the CCH report.
Sorry, which report?
I'm sorry, of the CCH's report, page nine of 16. And it says B, conflicts with architectural guidelines.
Alright, okay.
There you go, building articulation. So, for building articulation, there's a question about whether these buildings were designed with adequate articulation.
So, articulation being, you know, playing with the shapes so that you don't have a blank wall somewhere. And you can see from the rendering that we pushed and pulled the facade with bays and setbacks at the fourth floor, so there is an abundance of articulation here.
That's not actually what the design guidelines are talking about, articulation. It's a little, like, counterintuitive. But the plan actually describes articulation as a relationship to the urban conditions set in, not that it has setbacks or offsets. The building definitely has offsets, and, you know, what we would conventionally think of as articulation.
Right, and.
The plan calls for is that, again, gives prominence to visual access or acknowledges a corner, has that relationship to the urban conditions.
Okay, so, with regard to that, the six different buildings, all of the ones that are on the street face the street, the door faces the street, and they're all oriented towards that street to define, give a sense of, like, a frontage. With regard to material, you know, it's very eclectic around the area. You can pick or choose which buildings that you're referencing, but predominantly the ones to the west of Webb have these cladding materials. So, from a materiality standpoint, it fits in to the context. Then, there's also, you know, we have, it's referencing here Mediterranean revival style, quasi-Victorian residences, like, it's, there's six or seven different styles in the area, so, you know, you kinda have to pick and choose which one you wanna match.
So, in building articulation, it's been suggested we need a waiver. We don't necessarily agree, but to the extent the board believes we do, we've described all the ways that we believe that the buildings meet the spirit of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Then, continuing on to number two, there's a question about the, the ends of the townhouse buildings on the side elevations lack detail. Now, those elevations were specifically revised to the council's satisfaction, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And over the course of the year, numerous side elevations were proposed, until the council approved this one, is that correct?
Yep.
Alright, then going to number three, building parts. This is the void-to-solid ratio, and we recognize that the calculations were not on the plans. This is for both three and four, but have you had a chance to look at the calculations for the void-to-solid ratio and finestration?
We do have it. We do comply, in a nutshell, the requirement is a maximum of 45%, so we're below that number on each elevation. And we can provide a drawing that shows up in more detail if needed.
That'd be great.
So, we don't believe we need, we believe we meet the void-to-solid ratio and the finestration requirements, which are both mathematical calculations.
Yes.
Okay, number five, facade colors.
But, but you are going to provide.
We'll provide the calculations.
Alright.
The, item five, the facade colors, we need a waiver here. The requirement is that there be something in the yellow-to-red quadrant for the buildings, is that correct?
We clearly don't meet it, we need the waiver.
Okay. And you've described before how these colors are appropriate. Number six, building elements and attachments, yard equipment. I'll have Mr. Curly point out more specifically where all of the individual utility meters are. So, we'll skip that one for this moment.
I'm sorry, but I think that we skipped four?
Three and four, we indicated.
Three and four, we're together.
We comply with those. Number seven, can you describe the decks that are proposed, and that are proposed to be made out of wood? Sorry, not out of wood.
I'm sorry, just, item number six, you were talking about that, how was that resolved?
We're gonna have Mr. Curly testify to that, so he can show you on the site plans.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So, the projecting decks, they're, they're meant to be limited to three feet of a projection, and these are six feet, and they will be framed out of wood, but they'll be clad with a vinyl surface on top, and they'll have metal railings. So, we just don't meet the requirement for the depth and the fact that we don't have a bracket. And also, they're meant to be continuous, and these ones are broken up. So, there's a couple of different design waivers required for these.
But they're almost supposed to be a rear doors, but because of the orientation of buildings, street, they end up in front and side yards.
Yes, thank you.
Well, they all face towards the rear, but on some angles, you can see them from the side, correct?
Yes.
None are built toward, on the front of the building, for example.
Correct, so from, from the corner view, you can see the back on the street.
The side angle of the deck?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you tell us what the rationale was for requiring brackets and requiring a?
Well, the design guidelines for the plan are, you know, the vision was to sort of reinvent the classical architecture that was ever behind you, that was just actually depicted behind you. You know, for example, right behind Ms. Clayton, she has little short balconies on the front of the building. And it's sort of a Mediterranean, kind of a reliable sort of style, with the glade, the tiles, things like that. The developers that have come in have, you know, decided they want modern, modern-type, contemporary-type of architecture, and, and, you know, this project and the few before it, the similar design, you know, they're from one builder, so they kind of all look the same thing.
And we'll have our planner address that comment in particular, because while there are certain projects done by one builder, there's actually multiple builders that are building in the waterfront right now and building different projects, but our planner will address that comment. I just would like to touch on one other aspect of the CCH report, and that's 4.11. There were a few planned discrepancies, and I'll just run through them very quickly. This is what I promised before, that we'd indicate which one was correct. So, 4.11A, this was the question about the porches, that they're shown on the architectural plans but not on the civil. In this case, the architectural's correct, right, there are porches.
There are porches on the ends.
I'm sorry, I don't know where you are, we don't have 4.11.
Page 14.
Oh, 14, oh. I'm behind. Oh, 4.11, there you go. Thank you.
So, the porch areas are shown on the architectural plans, the civil plans will be updated to reflect the porches. For B, the site plan indicates small additions to buildings that appear to be external sprinkler rooms. Those are accurately reflected on the civil site plans, correct?
Yes.
And we'll have Mr. Curly testify as to those. C, the site plan does not.
So, I just wanna understand, because this came up also with the Tolles project, where they had problems with the elevations for those sprinkler rooms, in order to be accessible from the outside, are these gonna be accessible from the outside?
I will have Mr. Curly. They're a building element, but Mr. Curly can address the greeting, but they are accessible to the outside, but.
Only accessible from the outside, not from the unit, it is a unit, correct?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
It's shown on the plan.
So, it's our recommendation that they be represented in the elevation drawing, so that we can make sure we're not having conflicts with those or whatever, based on where they end up broadly with the grade.
And I'll have Mr. Curly specifically show where those are, but as a. And I'll have Mr. Curley specifically show where those are, but as a, that can be updated kind of in resolution compliance, making sure that they line up correctly from the elevation standpoint. C, the site plan does not indicate extensive steps leading to the stoop at the front of each unit, instead depicting a ramp. In this case, the architecture's correct, they are steps, correct?
Yes, they're steps.
Okay.
This is related to A, where there's those porches, and how those, again, the steps lead up to the porches, or the wide porch just leading the stoop.
So the architecture there is, is correct. And then we've already addressed the number 4.11, 4.11D, concerning the rooftop decks and that, that sentence. And I agree with you, that sentence is in the SDA, but it's after the carve-out.
So let me just also get some clarification on this. So for the three-story unit, is it still end units are 20 feet wide? And then the interior units are, like, so all of this...
Those two paragraphs have followed.
I mean, it seems to me it's exactly the same, whether it's a three-story or a four-story, except for the wall height, obviously. Do they have four and a half baths, four bedrooms, or they have different interior elements? Like, not a four-story building, because it's left four bedrooms?
It, it, it does, yes, yep.
So if you want to put the floor plans up?
All right, one second.
There you go.
Right there, so bedroom two, oh, so there's, there's a bedroom down here, one, two, three, sorry, three bedrooms.
And so those square footages are obviously smaller than the four-story units overall.
So if you have a description, it'll go around all the other four-story units, not any new description for three-story ones?
Oh, but perhaps you can run through really quickly the three-story program. So this is called the...
So same with the other clusters, the end ones are slightly wider. So this one, this, the end one that's 20 feet wide is a four-bedroom, but the one on the inside, so the three units on the inside of the cluster are a little bit more narrow, so they're only 16 feet wide, so those only have three bedrooms.
So those were all the questions I had for...
I'd one more description, it's small, and that might be from Mr. Curley, but on the easterly ends of Eighth and Seventh, do we show a retaining wall?
We're going to have, yeah, we're going to have our landscape architect and Mr. Curley address all the retaining walls and what the treatment of the retaining walls will be and where they're located, and the heights.
And we'll be talking about all the setbacks of all the different, of all the different units, so that we understand that what's a setback on Webb, what's a setback on Seventh, on Eighth, usually we'll see all that. You'll be presenting that.
I can have Mr. Curley talk about setbacks.
Yeah, that's fine. If we could next time, that would be great.
Do you have a question, because I have a few things?
What? Anyone?
I just had one. You'd mentioned there's going to be screening of the utility meters, is that going to be architectural or landscaping?
Landscaping.
Any other, other questions from the planning board members of this witness? Okay, go ahead, Donna, floor is yours.
Okay, so the three-story buildings, so there's some, I just, I gotta try and get my head around how the three-story buildings are...
Building.
Different from the four. I'm sorry, I don't know. So the end units are, the two-part garage, basically the same footprint as the other two-part garages. The interior units, same footprint as the four-story, they're 16 foot wide. It's just a reduced number of bedrooms. For the parapet wall, for the screening of the AC units or the, with that, so, how high is the parapet wall?
It's approximately four feet. It needs to be high enough to, to screen that condenser.
And we're planning on one unit for each building?
Yes. One, one should be adequate for the square footage.
One for each building or one for each townhome unit?
One, one for each unit.
And then are they going to be just directly mounted to the, to the roof, or are you going to do a platform for them to minimize vibration or access to towels or things like that?
There's going to be, like, a donage, like a curb that they sit on with vibration isolation, but it won't be, like, 18 inches tall.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, I'm just reliving some of the recent unintended consequences, shall we say, of other recent development.
Exactly, exactly.
And those units are actually located sort of in the, in the, in line of the front wall of the building?
Correct, yeah, it's the front of the townhome.
Okay. Can you go back to the four-story building?
Sure. This is the front.
So that would be like the street side?
Yep.
And so we have the parapet wall coming up about four feet, and so it's the one condensing unit, and it's going to be not higher than the parapet wall?
Correct.
And effectively the same condition in the three-story building? It's just...
One story lower.
Do you have the daytime elevation? So it's in that space, like on that end unit one to the left, it's in that space over the window?
It's right here.
Yeah, over there. So, fourth, which is the, to some extent, two to seven, we'll see that. And that's where a luxury happens, maybe, but they'll only be slightly above.
Right.
Because they're much taller, though.
Right. That's, I mean... Yeah, we, we can't screen from an eight-story building.
No, you're right, but it's like, but, but I appreciate that, that our board members are looking at our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors, so I appreciate that.
Well, you can develop it too, because you notice, like at Asper Coe, you know, I don't know if they just, you may add additional condensing units on the roofs, and some of them were, because of the way they're arranged, they're closer to the balconies than their neighbors.
Yes, they did that.
So it's, again, something else, as we start to see these things come online, just like lighting effects that are inside the building, things that are on the outside of the building, trying to make sure we have strong stuff early.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's it.
All right.
For the architecture for now.
Could you go to page five?
Sure.
On this end unit here. What are these gas meters?
Gas and electric.
So like all the, so they, they first, the end unit, and what's this, the end unit electric?
Gas, electric, and this is the water sprinkler room.
That'll be the question for Mr. Curley, but that was brought up too, functionality of maintenance, you know, there's no landing, three-to-one slope, in my opinion, is too steep. If you're going to have a maintenance worker, or JCPenney, or, or anyone that's out there servicing, somehow there should be some type of landing for maintenance, doesn't have to be that concrete, it could be landscaping, somehow something should be incorporated there, just for safety.
I'll have Mr. Curley address, address the grading and landscape, or grading in that location.
So do the utilities dictate or...
I'll have Mr. Curley go through that, because he's actually going to point out where all of the individual utilities are, and I'll let him do that, and that'll answer your question more thoroughly.
All right. All right.
Members of the public?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so, one thing that I would, would want to mention to the public, that there, there is a lot that has not been shown yet. So forgive me, or if anyone else says, "That's coming." So I know, I know there's a lot going on, so I'm just trying to manage our expectations here. So go ahead, we're opening it up to the public, questions of only what was presented, or questioned here.
Elaine Rocha, 301 Seventh Avenue, so the corner of Seventh and Webb, so to reiterate the request for the design of that aspect, I'd love to see that. Just a question in terms of, we're talking in stories, how high is each story for the four and the three, frankly? Because I have no concept of, like, I've looked at the plans and I see, like, the different numbers, and again, I'm not an architect, so that's why I'm asking the question.
So we, we have a dimension approximately from grade on these plans, the three-story up to the peak of the roof is shown as 39 feet.
Because on Lot 9, if you're looking at your, like, come across, right across the street on the corner of Seventh and Webb, so I'm just trying to get a...
Yep, the four-story, we have a dimension of 49 feet, again, to the peak of the roof from the first floor level, which the, it varies a little bit on how much higher than grade that is, but you could add about four feet onto that number from the street level.
Okay, so is the street level, like, is it livable space, or is part of that, like, what you consider the first story, like, below ground? I'm just trying to get a sense.
Livable space, the, well, the dimensions are here, they're, they're approximately 10 feet floor to floor. So it, it shows like the ceiling height, nine feet one. So it's 40 feet plus the height of the roof, and then you got to add on a few feet forward the base of the building, because it shows grade.
Okay, I have other questions, but I'll wait till we get to that part of the story. Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Healy, 305 Eighth Avenue, so other end of Webb. Right now, as Eighth Ave intersects with Kingsley, it widens, and it's hard to tell on those plans whether that width is staying or if we're, we're, this developer is taking part of the road there.
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
But I will just say...
But go ahead.
No part of the road is being used for the design of the project.
Okay.
The roads will be constructed separately by the master developer.
Okay, thank you. It was also hard to see in the plans how, how vehicles are going to access the, those townhomes that are in the center?
Yep, more to come.
Okay, sounds good. And then the townhomes that have a roof deck, so it's four living floors, and then the deck will be on top of the fourth floor?
No, the, the deck, it's not a full fourth floor, so on the fourth floor, it's like half a floor, and then the decks are all of that access room.
Okay.
So it's not a fifth floor.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next.
Karen May, owner and HOA board member for 301 Eighth Avenue, so just on the north side of 301. You said on one of the questions earlier from the board that the setback is five to 10 feet depending on, not being an architect, is that the same for all, all four sides? A, second question is, is that from the curb? When you guys say setback, is that from the curb or from the sidewalk?
That, that's, that's also to come.
That's to come?
That's also to come.
Okay, because she answered the question before.
Because we want those details to see.
Okay, question was answered before, that's why I was bringing that one up. 114 spaces, so if I do my math correctly, which is my life, I come to, that is the spaces inside the garage and then one parking space directly outside the garage, correct? The math works.
In some cases, too.
In two, yeah, for either the two car at the two ends, and that gives you a total of 48 spaces, and then the other 66 are coming from the one cars. That means there's no additional visitor parking spaces in the inside, and all of us who live at the shore know, you have a lot of friends, especially in the summertime, and you're visitors.
Yeah, no comments, no, no comments, if any questions.
Okay, so the question would be, are there any other visitor spots within the development beyond the one-car garage or two-car garage and the direct space right outside of it?
No.
You make friends like the rest of us do on all other developments.
Yes.
That's just, that's a comment.
All right, and then that was your question, or you answered my other question.
Thank you.
But, but there will be more, you will be able to see the layouts later.
And we'll be here.
Yeah, okay, good.
My, my question, I live at John Frederickson, I live at 302 Eighth Avenue, a second, second house up from Eighth Avenue. I have no driveway, and parking is a big issue. Now, away from...
Comment, you're commenting.
You hit into a question.
What's your question?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize. No, it's all right.
It's all right, we all learned.
So all the, all the parking spaces that are in front of the house on Webb, Eighth and Seventh, are they going to be public parking spaces?
The, that's to come, because what we have to also understand is where the curb cuts...
Right.
That exist today versus where the curb cuts are going to be tomorrow. So that will tell us, are we losing spaces? Are we gaining spaces? That's to come.
Okay.
We will have Mr. Curley address that. I, I will say though, that Mr. Milia testified that those 114 spaces that we're talking about are all in the property, that does not include any of the street parking.
But, but normally we do get to see that on one of the layouts, what are all the spaces that exist and how that's going to work, so that will be seen in the future.
Trash pickup.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. And the, the other, the other question I have is, snow. When snow comes...
We haven't gotten there yet.
You haven't gotten there yet. Sorry.
That's okay. It's okay, it's okay. It's all right. Anybody else? Okay. You wanted some additional documentation from this... Yes, we want, we want to get the, the view of Webb corners and back, because a lot of these folks are interested, as well as the board is interested. Obviously, we want to see the setbacks on all, on everything, like you normally do, you always, like, show us the setbacks of everything, so that we can explain what's sidewalk, what's not. We want, was that it?
Need the calculations for the void-to-solid ratio and finestration.
Yes, that's correct. I think that void-to-solid...
Need the calculations of void-to-solid and finestration.
Right. So everyone's coming back, I know you're all happy about that. What's our next? All right, I'd have to ask Ms. Smith, we have two choices for you. Half a meeting on October 3rd, or a whole meeting on Seventh? Half a meeting, hour and a half, or a full meeting on what, the 28th? Is it the 28th? Yes.
Is, is there not a half a meeting available, the second September meeting?
There is, on when?
The, the next September meeting.
There is...
Right.
Yes, there, there is a half a meeting, if you're interested, I will not be here, but if you're interested in having that one, it's, it's an hour and a half, you get an hour and a half.
Are there any revisions that are going to be made?
Yes, that's, that's a factor, are there revisions? Staff?
You won't have enough time to make the next move. No, they're not, they're not plan changes, they're not...
It's just an elevate, a, a picture of what's already been submitted, a prettier picture.
There's nothing that would hold to either review up. That's going to come after.
Correct.
All right, so, like I said, do you want half a meeting or you want a hall meeting? All right, so, like I said, do you want half a meeting or you want a whole meeting?
I mean, if possible, if we could have half the meeting on September and half the meeting October 7th, if needed, if we don't finish. I think Mr. Emilio is the most... Of all the four witnesses, he had the most testimony. The other three have much shorter presentations. So we may finish in half the meeting in September. But if we could take half the meeting in October 7th, too.
I can say that is not my personal preference.
Okay.
Because I will not be here.
Okay.
So if, October 7th, there's a half a meeting available. So... Unless, I mean, it's really up to you.
Yeah, we're...
It's up to you guys. Do you want to take the September meeting where I am not here? Mr. Gunnin will be running the show? Or you want to wait till the 7th? Or the 28th for a full meeting? It's up to you.
We're under some tight time constraints, so we would appreciate moving forward in September.
Okay. Then the other half of, so you have an hour and a half on the 27th. Is it 27th or the 3rd? 23rd?
On the 23rd.
September 23rd.
You want that? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So let's carry it.
Carry it.
Without further notice, you'll waive any time constraints.
I will waive until, I'm not sure we're up against it yet, but I will waive until September 24th.
All right, so can I get a motion to carry this application to September 23rd? No further notice?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
What time?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM?
Thank you.
But you'll be second up. So maybe 8:30, depending on how long the first application. But definitely 8:30 for sure.
Yeah, but it could, but if the first application...
It could be sooner. It has to be date, time, place.
Date, time, place.
Assume 7 o'clock and enjoy the first application. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to... What? Oh, dang it.
Sorry.
All right. You know, 10 o'clock, that happens today.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yeah.
Daniel Shinameo. Jen Souter. Vice Chair Gunnin.
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kozak.
Yes. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Me, second.
All in favor, I.